Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, on Zoom. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar, and was sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and no new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. The next Planning Board Special Meeting will be held March 19th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in person in council chambers. The next Planning Board Regular Meeting will be held April 2nd, 2025, at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Yamalat Roll Call, please.
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Here.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Here.
Mr. Wilks?
Here.
Councilwoman Scapa?
Here.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Waryno?
Present.
Chairman Bagel?
Here, thank you. So I make a motion that the Planning Board go into Executive Session. Who seconds?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman seconds the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Since the motion is carried, we're going to go into Executive Session, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be back shortly.
So what do we click on? I'm sorry.
Okay, please turn, please turn off your camera and mute yourself, and then there was another email sent to you for Executive Session.
Alright.
It should be on top of your emails right now.
Okay, we've got Mr. Scott, and you did. Okay, thank you.
Okay. For the Planning Board's knowledge and the public's knowledge, the Planning Board is being sued in Superior Court, SS County Civil Part Law Division by 410 Main Street Holdings LLC. They are unhappy that their application was denied, and they're taking us to court. I move that the Planning Board engage the services of Diana McGovern to represent us at that hearing and take service from the applicant, and we will send a contract to Town Council for their approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor McCartney seconds. Yamalat on the motion. Yeah, Mallette, you're muted.
I'm sorry, he didn't notice it. Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scapa?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waryno?
Yes.
Chairman Bagel?
Yes, motion carries, minutes are adopted. Diana, would you swear in the professionals, please?
Okay, we have Mr. Hazel and we have Mr. Scott, correct? Okay, if you please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You.
Okay, we've got Mr. Scott, and you did. Okay, thank you.
Okay. For the Planning Board's knowledge and the public's knowledge, the Planning Board is being sued in Superior Court, SS County Civil Part Law Division by 410 Main Street Holdings LLC. They are unhappy that their application was denied, and they're taking us to court. I move that the Planning Board engage the services of Diana McGovern to represent us at that hearing and take service from the applicant, and we will send a contract to Town Council for their approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor McCartney seconds. Yamalat on the motion. Yamalat, you're muted.
I'm sorry, he didn't notice it. Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scapa?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waryno?
Yes.
Chairman Bagel?
Yes, thank you, motion is adopted. Application PB 2414, 172174 Main Street LLC. The applicant has requested that this could be adjourned to the April 2nd, 2025 Planning Board Regular Meeting, and no additional notice will be given.
Can I just add, he did write a letter, and it is on the agenda. However, I followed up with an email because he did not indicate that he would waive time limits. He did confirm in an email to me that he would waive any time limits.
Thank you. PB 20-03, the Alpert Group LLC, 18 Central Avenue, Block 9, lots 3236 Zone, Central Valley Corridor Redevelopment Area, mixed-use project with 94 residents, 1223 of amenity, 3640 square feet of commercial space and related infrastructure for the applicant. The applicant is requesting a time extension due to extenuating circumstances. The Planning Board has received a letter describing those circumstances, but the applicant, the attorney for the applicant is?
It's Patrick Conlin, and he hasn't been moved over. His hand is up in the attendees.
Gotcha, okay.
I thought I brought him over already.
I still see him with his little yellow hand.
Okay, he was in, he must have.
And then he got kicked out, okay.
He was in here a second ago. I should be coming in again. Okay, good.
Terrific. Thank you all so much and I appreciate your patience with me.
Have a good evening. PB twenty-five dash oh-one, West Orange Community House, two fifty-two, fifty-two, Main Street, block one fourteen, lot seventy-eight. The applicant, Paul Sito, West Orange Community House proposes to construct an exterior stairway on the southern side of the existing two-story building. The applicant does not propose to change the exterior of the building nor impact impervious coverage or any other element of the property as part of this application for the applicant.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the board, Council Gregory Masara, Ben and Roger McDonald Masara in Verona, on behalf of the applicant.
Go right ahead, Mister Masara. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, um, as you had given in, in, in your introduction, uh, this is an application at two fifty Main Street, uh, the West Orange Community House. Um, I'm sure most members of the board are familiar with the West Orange Community House. Um, the applicant also owns the building next door at two forty-two Main Street in West Orange. Um, the property, um, is, um, in the, um, downtown redevelopment zone. Uh, we are seeking to, um, add an exterior staircase. If you're looking at the building from the, uh, to the left-hand side towards the rear of the property. Um, the, um, staircase has been depicted in the plans. We have an architect, Rodney Watkins, who I don't see that he has been, um, admitted into the meeting.
I'm here.
There he is, Mister Mand- it's under Mister Mandic, but it's, uh, Rodney Watkins is the architect. Um, Mister Watkins is here to testify as to the, the, the style of the stairs, the, the, the size and shape of the stairs and to some other things. Um, the, we, we are seeking no variance. This, this is simply site plan approval. My first witness is Paul Sito, who is the director of the West Orange Community House. Please raise.
And Mister?
That's Warren.
Please raise the right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mister Sito, can you, um, tell the board, um, your position with the West Orange Community House and what the West Orange Community House does in the community?
I'm the direct executive director of the Community House and we run a preschool program at two forty-two Main Street and we run before and after school programs in five elementary schools and we run summer camp at Edison Middle School. And we own the gym at two fifty-two fifty-two Main Street.
Okay, and the subject of the application is two fifty-two fifty-two Main Street, correct?
Yes.
Can you describe to the board that's the current configuration and condition of the, uh, building?
Uh, the building, uh, we purchased it online and we renovated it through the years and opened it as a gym in two thousand, I think seventeen, before the planning board. Um, it's currently still used as a gym at this time.
How high is the building?
Forty feet high, forty-five feet high roughly.
And is the gym the only use right now?
Gym's only used right now.
Okay, and you, um, have entered into negotiations with the West Orange Board of Education for use of the building, is that correct?
Yes.
And can you tell the board what those, uh, uh, what, what the, um, Board of Education desires to, to, uh, do with the premises?
We're planning on putting six classrooms where the gym is.
So six classrooms on the existing first floor, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you have, um, in mind a proposal to add a mezzanine, is that correct?
Yes.
And how high from the bottom, from the floor of the gym to the mezzanine, uh, to the proposed mezzanine will there be?
I think the top of the floor will be like thirteen feet roughly. Rodney knows better exactly.
And also under the roof that exists now?
Yes.
Correct, okay. And you have presented preliminary plans to, um, the township of West Orange, correct?
Yes.
And the plans have been reviewed by any one of a number of departments, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, you presented plans that called for a mechanical room on the new mezzanine, correct?
Yes.
So still within the roof, still way under the roof that exists?
Yes.
Okay, and you were told that you could not put a mechanical room on the mezzanine, why?
Well, we needed the egresses on that mechanical room.
And right now there's no egress, because there's no, there is no second floor, if you will, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so these stairs will serve to satisfy an egress into the mechanical room?
Yes.
Okay, and you had spoken to the fire chief about this or the fire department about this?
The plans were, I mean, that's the plans that submitted.
And you were told by someone from the fire department that stairs would be absolutely necessary?
Or, or the, and or the building department, or both.
Okay, okay. Um, I have no other questions of Mister Seba.
Okay, um, there is a men- memorandum from the Nishuain Group dated February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Will, will he or, um, the architect speak to the conditions that are not agreed to in the waiver?
Yes, I, I had planned to have the architect speak to those conditions.
Okay, fantastic. So we'll go around the board. Does any member of the board have any questions for Mister Sito? We'll start with Vice Chairman Garino. I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Garino had to, uh, recuse himself for this. He's part of this application. Uh, Mayor McCartney?
No questions, except to ask if we will be able to share a screen at some point, either the architect.
Would you ask?
If we could share a screen.
I guess the architect could do that, yes?
Okay, thank you.
Mister Masara, can the architect, will the architect share his screen so people can see what this looks like?
Yes, I thought that the board, um, I, I certainly have plans on the, uh, that I can do, um.
That's okay, a- as long as somebody does eventually.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sure.
Mister Albert, do you have any questions, Mister Sito?
I do not, thank you.
Uh, Mister Wilk, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Mister Klein, do you have any questions?
Questions.
Mister Morgan, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, Chairman.
Thank you. Mister Smiraldo, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Mister Cardoza, do you have any questions?
None, Mister Chairman.
Miss Caffrey, do you have any questions?
No questions, thanks.
Councilperson Scapa, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, uh. Uh, which is, well, um, nope. Uh, Mister Hazel, I guess your questions will be answered shortly.
Yes, I have one more though, if I could. I just want to.
All right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna confirm that, uh, just from the testimony that you will just be, this staircase will be as to service the mechanical room, so you won't, don't plan on having any students or so utilize this area?
No.
Yeah, that is correct, right.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. So that clarifies some questions. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mister Sito on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mister Sito on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none, thank you. Mister Masara, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, I call Rodney Watkins, Architect.
Right here.
Hey, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mister Watkins, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes, I am.
And your license is current?
Yes.
Can you please give the board the benefit of your education and your professional background?
Well, I graduated from, uh, NJIT, New Jersey Institute of Technology. Um, I've been a licensed architect since two thousand and five. I've appeared in many boards, uh, Essex, I mean, uh, NORC, um, Essex County, uh, Vocational Schools. Um, uh, a, a, a lot.
Okay, Mister Watkins, are you the per- are you the architect who signed the plans for this?
Yes, I am.
Go right ahead, sir. You have the floor.
Mister Watkins, you, you're familiar with the, uh, uh, proposed staircase at, at two fifty Main Street, um, in West Orange, is that correct?
Yes, there, we're proposing two.
And you designed that, you designed that staircase?
Yes.
Okay, can you, um, Mister Chairman, this is where I'm gonna have, I don't see that I can screen share. I don't think I have the authority to do that.
Did Mister Watkins screen share?
I think only the whole, um.
I made you have authority, so you can share.
Thank you. But where do I, uh, uh, I apologize, it's where, where on my menu does it say share?
Megan, can you help him?
Uh, sure. So at the bottom of your screen?
Yes.
You should be able to say share and then pull up the document. And if you tell what you're looking for, I might be able to have it too.
It, it's like a little green arrow going up.
Right, yeah, it's a square with a little, with an arrow in it. It's at the bottom, it just says share.
Me, hold on one second, I have. Because I have my documents on the bottom getting ready to put up.
Are you looking at the staircase? Is that what you're trying to show?
Yes.
I have that up.
Does anybody see what I have up? Okay.
Yes, there you go.
Now we got something.
If you go to the, uh, first page.
Could you identify what this is and was this submitted to the, uh, planning board?
Yes, Mister Watkins, um, are you familiar with this drawing?
Yes, I am.
And can you tell the board what the, uh, the title to this drawing is and the date, please?
Uh, the date, I, I really can't see the date right now, but um, that is the side elevation of a typical stair that we are proposing. And it's constructed of metal grates. There's steel str- treads. They are all perforated. There's steel guardrails, but you see the railings on the side. Um, there are steel posts that go into the ground. There are concrete footings that go a minimum of three feet. And those are the stairs that are proposed on both sides. If you look up to the top left, you will see on the left-hand side, that is the stair that goes on the left-hand side of the site. That is a, I think, a pro- about a eight to ten feet uh, space between the adjacent property, which has a fence. So it gives you more than enough egress from that mechanical space that is located on the second floor. On the right is the second means of egress, which is also exits, exits onto the adjacent sidewalk of the right side of the property, if you're looking at it from Main Street.
But those ones on the Irwin Street side, um, are not a part of this application tonight. It's your understanding they've already been approved, is that correct?
Uh, from the zoning, yes.
Yes, okay. So, um, if we go back to the proposed location of the new stairwell, um, how will, how will the stairwell, um, be attached to the ground?
It will have a, if you see the footing, I mean, the plan below, it shows the actual concrete footing that you exit onto after you egress from the stair.
And the, these stairs are not proposed to, um, decrease the amount of impervious coverage in and around the site, is that correct?
That is correct, because each stair has perforations that allow all stormwater to percolate through.
Okay, and, um, the, the slope of that property, um, will not be impacted by the installation of these stairs, is that correct?
That is correct.
Um. The uh, Nishuain Group is the planner for, for, uh, the township of West Orange. And, um, one of the items, they said there was no signature block on any of your plans. Would you, um, agree to, um, redoing the plans with a required signature block?
Uh, yes, I would.
Um, the other, uh, Mister Chairman, well, most all other waivers were accepted, um, by the Nishuain Group. Um, and I would hope that the board would there, would also, um, accept those waivers.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go through this quickly for administrative purposes and you can say yes, yeah, how, how we're gonna fix it. So item twenty, copy and or deletion of any existing or proposed deed restrictions or covenants. Are there any?
There are not.
Okay, good. Um, any existing or proposed easement or land reserved for dedicated to the public use? Plans indicate that there is a proposed encroachment into a public right-of-way on the northern side of the building, which should be shown on the plans. You'll show that on the plans?
Well, that is not a, a, a public right-of-way. That's a sidewalk between two forty-two, two forty and, and, uh, two forty-two and two fifty.
So, so that's okay then?
Yes.
Mister Hazel, do you agree with that? That's okay?
Yes, I was actually referring to the, uh, on the opposite side on the Irwin Street frontage. The, the.
The opposite side is not a subject of this application.
Okay, that's one.
Okay. Okay, item twenty-three, the applicant should identify any permission approvals that will be required for the installation of the pro- improvement.
I'm sorry, I don't have the twenty-two on my.
Twenty, twenty-three.
It was twenty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Um.
That's a yes, it's gotta be.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good. Okay, uh, twenty-five, the applicant should identify any waiver exceptions that will be requested, required for this application. Are there any?
No, none other than what we have proposed and what have been addressed.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the applicant has provided the list of properties within two hundred feet of the property, however, they do not provide an illustrative, illustrative map showing this. Because.
That was resolved, that was resolved by supplemental, I'm sorry, by supplemental submission. Um, that was dropped. We can introduce that as exhibit A if exhibit one or A one, um, if our desires.
Yes, okay, forty-four, the applicant should identify any lighting and proposed, uh, uh, that is proposed on the exterior in proximity of the proposed staircase. You have any lighting proposed?
Yes, yes, that was, um, Mister, uh,
Mister Watkins can, can affirm that, yes.
Yeah, so you'll put that on the app, on the, uh, final, uh, architectural plan?
Yes, I will.
Great, thank you. Uh, forty-nine, the applicant should show the access path to and from the proposed staircase.
We also should.
Plan.
That also is a yes, if not submitted already.
Yeah, okay, good. I like guesses. Um. Fifty-two, plainly go down, okay, i- is this in compliance with COA requirements?
There is, there's not a problem.
None, okay. Okay, no objection. Outstanding. Mister Hazel, is there anything else that I missed or should be added to this?
No, I believe the applicant addressed all the, uh, waivers that I had concern about. Thank you.
Excellente. Okay, so, um, the ladies and gentlemen of the planning board, I make a motion that we, uh, grant the waivers.
Chairman, I have a one, I have a question.
I'm sorry, okay.
Before, sorry. I was just, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but does the staircase, if it extends, does it still leave a sidewalk for residents that is a residential street?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I make a motion that we, uh, adopt, that we grant the waivers as requested by the applicant and, uh, add the conditions that I just, this, that we just agreed to based on the letter of February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five from the Nishuain Group. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vice Chairman Garino seconds, thank you. Uh, are there any questions? I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Garino can second, sorry. I'm sorry, shoot me now. Go ahead.
It was Mister Morgan.
Uh, Mister Morgan seconds, sorry about that. I'm sorry, Mister Morgan. Okay, uh, Yamalat on the motion.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
Mister Klein?
Yes.
Mister Marado?
Yes.
Mister Wokes?
Yes.
Mister Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scapa?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Chairman Bago?
Yes, thank you. Now, we'll go around the board, uh. Councilperson Scapa, do you have any questions for Mister Watkins on his testimony?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney. Do you have any questions from Mister Watkins on his testimony?
Uh, no, thank you.
Mister Albert, do you have any questions for Mister Watkins on his testimony?
I do not.
Mister William, or Mister Wilks, you have, Mister Wilks, do you have any questions?
No, no.
On his testimony.
No, no questions.
And having a fluid today. Um, Mister Klein, do you have any questions for Mister Watkins on his testimony?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mister Morgan, do you have any questions for Mister Watkins on his testimony?
No questions, sir.
Thank you. Mister Smiraldo, do you have any questions for Mister Watkins on his testimony?
No, sir.
Mister Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mister Watkins on his testimony?
None, Mister Chairman.
Miss Caffrey, do you have any questions for Mister Watkins on his testimony?
I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Mister Hazel, any other questions on his testimony?
None, thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mister Watkins on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. I'm sorry, Miss, Miss McGovern.
You asked, you forgot to ask Mister Scott.
Mister Scott, I'm sorry. I didn't know that he weighed in on this.
Yeah, he did a report, did you see?
Okay. I must have missed his report. Mister Scott, do you have any questions for Mister Watkins on his testimony?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, I did do a report, but no, I do not have any questions on the testimony. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I did do a report, but no, I do not have any questions on the testimony. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. McGovern, could you, I don't see, I don't have it. Could you identify the date of Mr.?
Sure.
Report, I'm sorry.
It was February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and um, what I note in his, in Mr. Scott's report, uh, the questions he had were providing testimony regarding any demolition that will occur on the site to construct the stairs along a portion of the southerly side of the building. And he also wanted to know uh, how runoff patterns will be maintained as so not to adversely impact the existing, um, because the stairwell may impact the elevation of the existing sidewalk. So I that's the way I read the report as the open, the questions that Mr. Scott had.
Mr. Watkins, you're up, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe we, we addressed the elevation question.
Yeah.
Um, and there will be no demolition. And then Mr. Watkins can then follow up on that.
Uh, basically, the stair will be constructed as per the existing grade. And all, there's no stormwater issue because the stairs are basically perforated, so all rainwater goes through it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Watkins on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any member of the I'm, do you see none?
I, I'm sorry.
Okay, done. Okay, um, do any members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any member of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none, we're gonna close that portion of the meeting. Mr. Miss Sarah, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, uh, we have an application that does not require variances. Um, the only possible property that could be impacted is a property owned by the applicant. Um, the site plan, uh, the, the stairway uh, have no adverse impact on the community, um, on, on uh, the zoning code. But we heard testimony from um, Mr. Watkins of, of that nature. And we've heard testimony of Mr. Sido that um, the intended use of the stairway would be to create um, access to mechanical room on the second floor. So uh, there are no um, um, issues of, of safety, welfare, uh, et cetera. So I ask that the board approve this uh, this site plan with the waivers.
Thank you. Okay, um, I make a motion, we approve PB twenty-five dash oh-one, West Orange Community House, two fifty-two, fifty-two, Main Street, block one fourteen, lot seventy-eight, noticing Mr. Hazel's report with waivers agreed to and Mr. Scott's report. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Klein seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Yamlet on the motion.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
May McCartney?
Yes.
Chairman Bobo?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, PB twenty-four dash nineteen, The Waymaker LLC, block one oh-six, lot two oh dot oh-three, zone R one forty Eagle Ridge Way. The applicant, The Waymaker LLC, proposed to undertake site work on a lot with an existing one-family dwelling. The proposed site work includes the installation of a surface chamber as an enhancement to the previously approved stormwater seepage pit detention system. Ms. Triolo for the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'm pleased to be with you. We have our final testimony for this evening. Um, I just wanted to um, just tell the board um, that unfortunately uh, the chairman's recommendation that there be a meeting held for a global resolution of the um, the situation with the stormwater uh, at Crystal Point Eagle Ridge Way in Lululemon Park was not successful. And that um, we are back to our application. We're ready to proceed. And um, at the request of um, the board, I have Paul Grabowski with me to testify regarding the questions that have arisen about the ditch. And then after that, I would like to speak to the board concerning testimony of objectors and their consultants in order to have this streamlined and not go until two o'clock in the morning. Um, I can do that now or we could do that after Mr. Grabowski testifies?
I have, I have two things. Mr. Smoraldo, I think he is recusing himself unless he wants to just sit and listen. That's fine.
Thank you very much. I wish you the, the best this evening. You have a wonderful evening. Good luck.
Thank you.
And then Thank you, Mr. Smoraldo.
The um, attorney for the objectors, Rob Simon, in his, uh, in the um, attendee, he's raised his hand.
Wasn't sure who he was. I'll move him in now.
And one other thing, it looks like the zoning official has her hand up.
No, that was me, I think.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. It's the township of West Orange.
That, yeah, that's me.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting confused, guys.
Don't be confused. Okay, so you'll talk about objectors and everything else after you, uh, Mr. Grabowski speaks. How's that?
Yes.
Good.
I'm going to swing my laptop around because Mr. Grabowski does not own a laptop. So I chose, I chose to join him um, and use my connection. So he will be on screen as Priscilla Triolo, I hope you don't mind, and I will sit down next to him.
Okay, so uh, Ms. McGovern, will you swear him in?
Yes. Mr. Uh, Grabowski, what is your first name?
Paul.
Paul, okay. Mr. Grabowski, please raise your right hand, which you've already done. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
What is your business, Mr. Grabowski?
Uh, contractor, heavy construction.
Do you do site work?
Yes.
Were you engaged by The Waymaker LLC to do the site work at forty Eagle Ridge Way?
Yes.
And did you do the excavation for the pool and the pool house there?
Yes, we did.
Did you install the ten-unit or ten-tank seepage pit system?
Yes, we did.
And you did that in accordance with the plans uh, prepared by Madarazos?
Correct, yes.
Okay. While you were on the job site, did the general contractor contact your office um, in the summer of twenty twenty-three concerning the condition of the ditch on the property?
Yes, we were contacted about that.
Did you receive a call and ask you to clean the ditch and put in riprap?
Yes, we did that.
And did you do that in the summer of twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay. After you had done that, you continued to work at forty Eagle Ridge Way?
Yes, that was ongoing.
Were you notified that there was a um, potential violation issued with regard to um, the riprap in the ditch? Do you recall that happened in November of twenty twenty-three?
Yes, yes.
And can you tell me what that was?
Uh, they wanted to, they wanted to put riprap in the, in the ditch.
Did you already put riprap in the ditch?
Yes, we did previously.
Okay, I just want to correct the record if I could. Um,
Go ahead.
Yes, it was November of twenty twenty-three. Uh, did you, that they were, received a deficiency notice concerning the riprap? Is that correct?
Yes.
And that deficiency notice um, instructed you to add riprap, is that correct?
Yes, we added more as they requested.
And so you never received a violation?
Not after November.
Okay, um, so at two separate times, you cleaned the ditch and put in riprap. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. At any time that you did this work, or strike that, when you did that, did you follow the ditch?
Follow was there, that's all I could do.
Okay, did you change the ditch?
No, as far as just put riprap in.
Did you move the ditch from one side to the other?
No.
Did you change the direction that the ditch was already in existence?
No.
Did you um, alter, alter the, I'm sorry, I have people that don't understand. Um, did you in the summer of twenty twenty-three, did you change the direction of the ditch?
Not at all.
And in the November of twenty twenty-three, when there was a deficiency notice, did you change the direction of the ditch?
No, just added riprap as they requested.
So if I would be so bold, you followed the ditch, removed the debris and put in riprap?
Correct.
And the ditch remained in the location that it was where you found it?
Exactly.
Okay, when you were doing that, did you come across two broken pipes?
Yes.
What were they made out of?
Uh, vetrified clay. It was two twelve-inch pipes that were that were compromised by, I guess, age and damaged unto trees and they were totally blocked off.
Okay. Did you replace them?
Yes.
And what did you replace them with?
With the elliptical concrete pipe.
Was the elliptical concrete pipe re-put back in the approximate location?
Exact location where the two pipes were.
Okay. Did you do anything else with regard to the ditch or the riprap or any construction down in that area?
No, just control the flow of water with riprap and replace the pipe.
Okay. I have no further questions. I turn them to the board.
Hey. Okay, we'll start with uh, Vice Chairman Garino. Do you have any questions?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. May McCartney, do you have any questions?
Hello, Mr. Grabowski. Can, I'm still trying to get a clarification on was any of this work done near a steep slope?
Sorry?
A what?
Was any of this work done near a steep slope? We have a steep slope ordinance?
A what?
Steep slope. What was this?
No, you were in the ditch.
It was in a ditch. It was a ditch, a drainage ditch.
Right. And the site is on a slope, and I'm just wondering how many feet away from the slope was the work being done?
It was pre-existing as far as it was right there on the I'd have to say it was right on the property line. Uh, forty, forty Eagle Ridge Way.
No, I understand the address. I'm just trying to figure out if work was done near this, a steep slope.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's right where the pipes were. I'd have to say it's right on the edge.
And, okay, we have an
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, but I, I, I can't follow you. Um, I, I think that he's got a perplexed look on his face, and I'm right next to him with the same perplexed look. Uh, neither one of us can follow your question, so I apologize.
I don't know how else to ask it. I don't really know how else to ask it. We have an ordinance in place that work has to be one hundred feet away from a steep slope, and I'm asking if work was done within a one hundred-foot buffer.
I, I think, May McCartney, if I may, I think he, Mr. Grabowski is saying this is pre-existing condition that the pipe was on the steep slope. But I still think that you have to come to the town to get a, to get a permit to work in that area, even if it is a pre-existing condition. So the question was, did you come to the town to say that there's a, a broken pipe on a steep slope, a pre-existing condition that needs to be repaired? If, May McCartney, is that pretty much where we're going?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh, that wasn't directed in any which way of permit. I was just directed by soil conservation to, to repair what was there as far as riprap, put riprap in the ditch. And the pipe that was, that was there, we replaced it with a, with a new concrete pipe.
Any other questions, May McCartney?
Uh, no.
Okay, councilperson Scarpah, do you have any questions for Mr. Grabowski on his testimony?
Uh, no, I don't.
Thank you. Mr. Alper, do you have any questions from Mr. Grabowski on his testimony?
Um, no, I don't.
Mr. Wilks, do you have any questions for Mr. Grabowski on his testimony?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Mr. Grabowski on his testimony?
This is I, did we get an answer?
No.
To the question whether the pipe sits on a greater than ten percent grade and the work was done in that area. So is that disturbing a steep slope?
No, disturbance is already pre-existing. Everything was pre-existing except for the exception of adding riprap that was authorized by soil conservation to put in there to, to I guess that's part of their soil erosion program to slow down the water flow and keep the sediment where it should be.
So then this will be a toss-up question. And does anybody know if Mr. Grabowski needed to get a permit to do any work in the backyard because the whole backyard was greater than ten percent? Slope? I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure about that.
No.
I, I guess we're gonna come around
No, that's
As we get to, as we get to Mr. Scott, I think we'll get an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Klein.
Okay, Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Grabowski on his testimony?
No questions at this time, Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Smoraldo, do you have any, Mrs. Smoraldo's gone, sorry. Uh, Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Caffrey, do you have any questions for Mr. Grabowski on his testimony?
Uh, yes, I do have a couple of questions. Uh, thank you, Mr. Grabowski, for being here tonight. Um, did, do I understand that um, the Soil Conservation District directed you to, to replace the pipe? Is that correct?
They directed me to put riprap in the ditch.
Um, I, I guess regarding the, the pipe replacement, did the Conservation District or someone provide guidance about what kind of pipe or the size of pipe or anything like that used in the replacement?
Um, just, we just uh, cleaned.
I told him to.
It was, it was part of, just part of keeping it open and clean. And um, like I says, we, we replaced the pipe with a new pipe. There was two broken twelve-inch pipes. We put in one large concrete pipe that accommodates the same kind of flow that previously flowed through the vetrified clay pipes. And they were there. I mean, they were compromised by age. I mean, they're probably over eighty, eighty years old and vegetation grown through it and trees and everything else clogged every everything up. And we just merely made the water flow through where it normally did when initially was put in. So.
And, and so sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Yeah, so, yeah, just so I'm clear, I feel like I'm asking the same question. Um, so the, the Soil Conservation District, they, they told you to replace the pipe?
No, that wasn't part of it.
It was just a part of when they, they directed you to, to clean up the ditches, is that right? And so that was part of, of that?
Yeah, clean up the ditch, yeah, clean up the ditch and put riprap in it.
Okay. If you're familiar with riprap, you know what riprap is? I, I, yeah, I do. I do know what riprap is, yes.
All right.
Yeah, um, yeah, I did, yeah, I'm just curious about the, the pipe size and how, and how that came to be. But yeah, that was my, my other question. Um, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you. Not at this time, thank you.
Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Mr. Hazel, Mr. Grabowski on his testimony?
Uh, yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Grabowski, uh, you were the uh, the, the contractor that was doing the work on the site for uh, for E forty Eagle Ridge Way, right, for all of the work that took place?
Yes.
Okay, so you mentioned that uh, you were putting um, you know, riprap, I guess, in the ditch. You said that was at the direction of the Soil Conservation District?
Right.
What was the reason for Soil Conservation District to be on, on site?
They're periodically checking on the site conditions as we're progressing with the construction. They're always there checking the silt fence tracking pad. And this job ironically had this, the drainage ditch that went through the property and I guess they took notice too and said, hey, by the way, you need to put some riprap in there. And that's what their protocol is on most of these jobs. Wherever there's water flow during a storm, you want to control the soil movement. So riprap actually slows down the water and, and controls the soil, the sediment, from carrying downstream to wherever it ends up in the ocean, so to speak.
If I may, Mr. Scott, just to clarify things, in June of 2023, Soil Conservation District approved the plans we had submitted, the applicant had submitted to Soil Conservation. In June 2023, we received their letter um, with regard to their approvals. Um, and we had been um, amending and submitting as things went along. I mean, we submitted when it was started and we continued to submit. And um, so uh, I, I just wanted it to be clear that, that the applicant is the one who initiated the contact with Soil Conservation and that they were doing their inspections pursuant to um our filing and our permit with them.
Okay, that's good to know. So as, as was required by the state of New Jersey, any project that receives a Soil Conservation um permit or Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Permit, uh, they are required to notify uh the district in advance of the work taking starting. So whenever it was that um, you know, Mr. Cohen and, and Mr. Grabowski notified them, they must have come out to do their inspection. Uh, my question is, is did this plan, or should I say their application, propose any work in the area of the ditch? It's my understanding that when they applied for their Soil Erosion Permit, they were uh at least, I'm sorry, not to their, their permit to the, to the uh, to Soil Conservation District, but their application to the township was that they were supposed to keep their disturbance less than one acre. And I'm, my, my question is, is does that one acre disturbance go all the way over to the area of the ditch? Or was the disturbance of the ditch part of the application to the Soil Conservation District? I, I haven't seen that application to the Soil Conservation District.
I think that, yeah, Mr. Scott, if, if I could, um, and I believe that these have been provided to you. Um, there were permits issued for the pool in the poolhouse. And then there was a separate permit issued for uh the stormwater control uh seepage pits. And all of those were permitted. They were inspected as they were installed. Um, none of the work included, none of the plans and none of the work submitted included the ditch. It was Soil Conservation who came out to the site to check whatever, silt fences, check, make sure that um, everything was proceeding in accordance with uh their requirements and they decided that they wanted the ditch cleaned and riprap installed. That's all that happened. No big, no big, big secret thing.
Okay, so the work at the ditch only took place after the visit by the Soil Conservation District in the direction that was given by the inspector or the, the employee from the Hudson, let's just say Soil Conservation District. Is that what your testimony is?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay.
And it was done twice. One was in the summertime and then they came back and issued a deficiency notice on 11/22/23 and they wanted more riprap. Um, I can't even.
Okay, Mr. Triolo, Mr. Triolo, let Mr. Grabowski testify. He's the one who's sworn in, please.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that any of the work that was done with regard to the ditch was not initially intended, but was done at the direction of the Soil Conservation District? Is that what your testimony is, Mr. Grabowski?
Yes, correct. I would have never touched it unless they, they authorized it. Why would I, why would I go near it if I don't have to? So they were, they're, they, like I said, they come here to a jo- any job, so see this job, they come and periodically check to see how progress is after a rainstorm or, you know, like a, check the tracking pad, they can check um, you know, silt fence condition. And when they see things, they, they throw up a um, a notice saying, you know, do this and do this, you have deficiencies and we follow what they say.
Okay, and just my last question is, uh, your, uh, your testimony is that you did not reroute the ditch, you just added riprap at the end and then replaced the two 12-inch pipes that were initially uh, or that were discovered, I guess, during the time that you were you know, following the direction of the Soil Conservation District.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have at this time.
All right.
Mr. Grabowski, did the uh plans given to the Soil Conservation District show the new pipe?
No. We, Mr. Chairman, I think it was added.
Well, did they approve it? Did, i- is there an approved plan in the Soil Conservation District with the new pipe and was there uh, was there a citation, was there a citation for exceeding the amount of disturbance of, of land? And was that then rectified? With the Soil Conservation?
Yeah, I don't understand the question.
Okay, so let, let's do one at a time. There's a, there was a, there's a plan, a final plan that the Soil Conservation District has to approve, was that pipe that existed now?
Oh, that's the old one.
Was that pipe on any plan that the Soil Conservation District approved?
You're asking a legal question, Mr. Chairman, and I believe that the plan was updated uh, that the plans do show.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm asking in absolutes, not I believe. So we really need to know, was it approved by the Soil Conservation District with the new pipe in place? That's a very simple question.
Do you want me to answer?
I, I can't answer that, so.
Is it a?
I'm not in a position to answer that.
Okay.
I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm being told by authorities to do certain things and that's what I do.
Okay. So somebody directly said, take that pipe and fix it? Or they said, that's not what?
Pretty much so, yeah. It's because the two pipes were compromised by conditions of mother nature and, and weather and it, the pipes were breached, that you needed to replace it. So that's what we did. And then followed up with riprap and everything else.
Okay. Um. Hmm, did you, uh, Mr. Grabowski, did you see the uh letter from uh Mr. Scott on his uh evaluation of the site?
No, I haven't.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, um. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Grabowski's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Um, Mr. Simon. Well, let me get, okay, go ahead, Mr. Simon.
No, go ahead, whatever you want to.
Let, let's get the members of the public out of the way first and then we'll come back to you if that's okay? Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Grabowski's testimony?
Yes, we have Michael DeChester. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Mike DeChester, 35 Mountain Avenue, West Orange. I live along the Brook. Um, and question, that's been damaged, causing damage. Um, my question for Mr. Grabowski, um, why did you increase the size of the pipe? If you remove two 12-inch pipes and you replace it with something, an elliptical 36-inch, which seems to be much larger, what was the point of that?
Uh, just to get better sheet flow. It's part of cleaning and and the pipe wouldn't be breached as easily as the other ones would be. Typically, that's what I have my experience with these storm uh, with these storm systems that we put in on many, many jobs. So I felt that the calculations were right, but as far as answering your question about water flow, I mean, there, there was no increase on this site of dumping more water down there. I mean, the water, the rain and the water up here hasn't changed in hundreds of years, so it did not increase velocity or anything. It just,
I, I think.
Protects the pipe from breaching, that's all it is. You'll go to a wider pipe, it's elliptical, it's not round.
Well, so, something happened to increase the water refill. When did you start working there for Mr. Cohen? Was the previous to 2023?
Started here at 21, I guess. So what, as far as the storms, have you monitored the storms? I, I, I don't do that, but as far as uh water flow and calculations, I mean, that's not my position. I just, I just know through experience that it rains in New Jersey and there's certain rainstorms that come through and sometimes they're horrific. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know how to answer that question exactly.
Increase in water flow. Do you, can you speculate on why there might be an increase in water flow?
There's no increase.
There's absolutely.
How could?
The pu- the pipe at Mountain Avenue is 15 by 30. The opening is 15 by 30.
Sorry, sorry, uh, no, you can ask him a question, please don't.
Think that I should come down there and see what the problem is.
Anytime.
If you have a complaint, I would like to come down to the park and see.
Oh, okay, afterward, gentlemen.
See, well, to see what, what these uh, these problems are down here. Maybe we can get together and solve it. I mean, I, I, like I said, there's no more increase in water up on top of the site. I, we haven't increased the water flow. As far as I see, my experience being around 40-plus years, uh, no, um, we did not increase water flow.
Something changed.
So if there's a problem down your way, we should come down and look at it and then we could discuss some more.
That would be fun. How many trees?
That'd be great.
Under your watch?
How many trees what? I didn't hear that question.
Trees removed on your watch or while you were there? How many dozen trees?
Let's say what just happened.
All we hear is the word "on your lot."
He's, I, I think he said, "How many trees were removed?" I think that was the question.
Correct. Can you, can everybody?
I don't have that answer right away. Let's, let's read it. Boy, I don't, there was, there was, there was a tree permit put in. Play, so I think it was like 40 trees?
No.
Forty?
How many? On 40?
No, he's talking about the address. He said on 40.
Yeah, what?
He says he, he would look at the tree permits.
Yeah, I, I don't have an answer for that. I wasn't.
You didn't remove the?
I wasn't expecting a question like that. I don't know. I didn't remove, there's, there's trees that Richard Cohen removed.
Do you know who took the, who did the tree work up there?
Which tree work are you referring to, sir? You have to be more specific.
Mr. Triolo, let's fix.
I don't know what he's referring to.
Mr. Triolo, there, we're not gonna, Mr. Grabowski didn't testify to trees, so let's focus on what he did, not trees, right now. That's for somebody else, okay? Please?
So you're asking, I just need to clarify, you're asking if he took trees down on, on 40 Eagle Ridge Way?
Correct, but I, I know, I know dozens of trees were removed and.
Okay, sir, sir, ask him a question, don't make statements, please. Ask a question. So the question is, Mr. Grabowski, do you know if any or how many trees were removed on 40 Eagle Ridge Way? If you do, it's a yes. If you don't, it's a no.
No, no, I don't.
That's it, then we're done.
I don't have any idea.
Great.
Okay, so the elliptical pipe um, that's there, do you know the approximate length of that?
I think it's under 60 feet. I think it's somewhere around a 9% grade, which is probably uh the same, same percentage of grade that the property, you know, was draining on that, that ditch. It did comple- complements the ditch uh slope.
And is that, is that the same length as the two 12-inch pipes that were there previous to that?
Most likely because there's remnants of it broken up. Uh, there's two of them visible that was left, that was right at the edge of the property. And the rest of it was all busted up into small pieces because it's uh vetrified clay. It's like if you ever drop a, a kitchen plate, it shatters into many pieces. And a lot of it was just part of the terrain and, and it's probably, you know, maybe 50 feet, 60 feet long and through there. It's hard to tell, but you could see where the crossing was through there. It's like a, it must have held a path for, uh, at one point there. It was, it was there for a reason and, and we just replaced it, we replaced with concrete pipe, which what, they make today. They don't make vetrified clay anymore. It's a little concrete or it's a HDPE pipe, so.
Do you know, you know if that's on, uh, completely on Lot 40's property?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm uh 90% sure because we followed what the property, there's property lines there and where that pipe was. It seemed like it was within proximity of it.
And the, the, the ditch, so, so I mean, the ditch is on, the ditch that you provided, that you put riprap in is on the, at the beginning of the elliptical pipe. And that elliptical pipe runs on an angle and, and uh, basically to the end of the, the beginning of the steep slope. Does that sound accurate?
Yeah, yeah, you could visibly see it. I have nothing to hide. But that's, yeah. Just exactly where the other pipes were.
Right, and, and at that pit, at that pit where you put riprap, uh, that was, um, if you went, if you went upstream, runs more or less parallel with the two parcels, runs uh underneath Eagle Ridge Way and begins at uh Crystal Point's property. Is that accurate?
I, I have to object. He never testified to any of that. I don't know, I don't even know what the question is about.
The answer is no. If the, if the answer is no, the.
No, oh, wow. It's, it's, I don't know where the, what they think you did.
No, I don't think, I'm just wondering if you were aware of that's, that's why that pit was there, right? That water that's, there, there, there's a swell that runs from across Eagle Ridge.
But what does that have to do with you, though? You're down, I don't understand. You're down along the park. What does that have to do with you? I said, really said that we didn't increase any water flow. I, I mean, I'm a contractor. I didn't do anything up here except just follow orders.
You're just asking if you're aware of it. Are you aware that it runs also toward the other lot? There's two, you know, it's, there, there's, there's two swells coming into that riprap uh pit. Are you, were, were there two swells when you worked on that? Or was there only one?
It's a swell.
Swell, uh, there's a drainage ditch. It's all I know where, where we put the riprap in.
A, a channel that, I mean, that, that pit's there, right? That's receiving water from u- u- upstream, right? That's rainwater.
I'm, I'm, I, I'm sorry. I, I can't follow you. You're talking about swells and channels. All this man talked about was cleaning a ditch and putting riprap in a ditch. So either we stay with his testimony or Chairman, I'm asking you to curtail it because I don't even know what he's talking about.
What's, where is the water coming from that goes into that ditch?
You're talking at Eagle Ridge Way?
No, the ditch where he's.
The water, the water's coming from, it comes down, it actually comes from Crystal Point. There's a, if you want to, if I can answer this correctly, let's see. Those pipes are underneath Eagle Ridge Way and they come up to the uh, they start at Crystal Point by the gate. So there's a, there's an entry there, like I think it's a 12 or 15-inch pipe there. And then it, then it comes down Eagle Ridge Way past 40 and there's also a pipe that goes up the old, you know Eagle Ridge Drive?
Right.
The old Eagle Ridge Drive, I think it got uh deleted or whatever you call that. There's a storm pipe that goes up that way to Crystal Point. And then there's another pipe that's uh on adjoining lot. I think it's a 12-inch DIP pipe, ductile iron. That drains that lot. So basically, most of the water's coming from all the surrounding properties and what I see is nothing draining from 40 at all. So, you know, it's very plain, it's very plain to see. I mean, you could come up, you know, you could, it's, it's, it's.
I've been up there.
You follow the contour of the land. If you know what's high and low, water runs downhill.
Great, Mr. DeCheser, where, where you've, uh, used up your time. Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Gbowski on his testimony?
Yes, we have, um, a couple of other people. Um, we have Andy Kessler. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, Andrew Kessler, twenty-nine Mountain Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey.
Wait.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Gbowski, do you have any pictures of these broken pipes? Have you handed it over to any authorities?
Authorities? No.
You have pictures?
I took a couple snapshots, but I'm not a picture guy. I just kind of take things when I.
Where, where are? Where are these snapshots?
Uh, I don't know, I'm seeing something here.
Have you, have you turned, have you turned it over to your attorney? I'm sorry, have you turned it over to Mr. Triola?
No, I don't, I, listen, I'm just, uh, I'm just speaking at him. I don't have any lawyers on hand here. I don't have.
No, no, I know you don't.
Working with Richard Cohen.
I, I get it.
That's all I know, I'm here for.
Mr. Kessler, maybe I could clarify.
No, you don't have to clarify.
Mr. Gbowski works for.
Oh, 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 too many people, guys, too many people talking at once.
I don't need anything clarified by Ms. Triola. I'm fine with my question. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Did, did you?
Well, he said you're counsel and I need to clarify that. I'm not his counsel, I'm counsel for the Waymaker.
Mr. Triola, I don't need anything clarified.
Okay, good.
Okay, what was the question?
I don't thought the question was.
We listed pipes.
I don't need anything clarified. Someone asked a question.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm easygoing here. Let's see, there's, we got a couple of pictures of the pipes here that were left.
Given these pictures to Mr. Cohen?
Can you repeat that?
Have you given these pictures to Mr. Cohen?
Yes, yes, he has them.
Do you know?
And Mr. Cohen has given them to West Orange.
Okay, thank you.
We have pictures. What's, what's the next, what, what, what do you want? What's the next question?
Did you receive any written instructions from the Soil Conservation, uh, group to put in the elliptical pipe?
No, we just put riprap in, and then basically there was pipes there. We merely replaced the concrete pipe.
I, I just, I just asked you here, yes or no? And I want to know, I just wanted, I just wanted to know on any of the drawings that, did you submit any drawings to, uh, the Soil Conservation people?
No, they don't get drawings. They just merely come out and inspect and what they, and they just, uh, put together, uh, how would I say, they do silt fest, they do drainage, they do sediment runoff.
Okay.
As far as piping, no.
So that's, it's really, the, the, that's not, they're, they're not involved in the issue of the insertion of piping to run water out of the elliptical pipe.
Mr. Kessler, we merely replaced the pipe that was damaged and I don't, can't see where this, I don't know where this is going right now.
Now, the elliptical pipe, the elliptical pipe that you put in, the water that's running out of the out, the out, the out, the end of it, I suppose, where is it going?
Goes downhill and follows the point of least resistance.
So it's going down the mountain into the park?
Like it always did.
Well, but, Mr., I, I, I just want to know what, what's doing now. It's running down, down, outs, out of the pipe, down the mountain, onto the terrain of the mountain, and then into Llewellyn Park. Is that correct?
Like it historically has done, yes.
Well, you keep on saying historically done, but I just want to answer the question, what's happening now, since you put it in, without giving me some other answer. So let's do it again. Is that, that water that from the pipe that you, you put in, running out of the pipe and all the way down the mountain and into Llewellyn Park?
Yeah, it's running down there, yes.
Okay, okay.
And you live down.
Have you seen, have you seen, have you seen any of the pictures that were circulated to, uh, West Orange of the flooding that's occurring down the mountain into Llewellyn Park from your elliptical?
Pictures, no. I, I think we had one time asked to come down and look at your situation, your complaint.
I, that's what I asked you. I asked you if you've seen any of the pictures.
See pictures of water running down, down the hill, yeah.
But, yeah, yeah, I haven't seen the flooding going down, down, down the mountain into Llewellyn Park.
I object to, I object to your terminology of flooding because there is no flooding. There is water.
I am not questioning you, I'm not questioning you, counsel.
Flooding, you have to explain.
Guys, guys, stop, stop.
Just questioning him.
Stop, wait a second, hold it. One person, one person at a time. That's it. So, sir, 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 Mr. Triola has an objection to your description, so can we say water flowing down?
I just wonder whether he's seen any of the, the pictures.
Perfect.
You know what, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
If he has it, he has it.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Triolo.
If I may.
Yes, you may.
On, we, after Mr. Cohen testified on behalf of the Waymaker, the chair asked if he could submit the documents to which he referred. And we assembled them and we submitted them and, uh, to Jamalat's cred, credit, she helped me get them over to her because I didn't know how to do it originally, but I gave her everything and she has it listed on the agenda. So the pipes that Mr. Kessler is looking for a picture of, they are on the listing of all of the documents that Jamalat added and are clickable on the agenda. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that the picture was taken and the picture was submitted.
I have another question. Um, where, where exactly is the elliptical pipe installed? At what location?
Same location, same location where the old pipes were, exactly in the same location.
So you have pictures that show the location of the old pipes, showing the old pipes and you've pictured, that can be compared to pictures of elliptical pipe at the same location?
Yeah, because there's a dead tree that's next to it, on, on the, near the slope there and it's, it's, you could see it, like you come out and look at it. It's like within a couple inches of where it originally was.
How does it impact the wall that's there?
And, and where, where was this that you have the elliptical pipe? At what location of the top of the mountain as compared to the, the, uh, Mr. Cohen's property and the abutting property owner?
I'm, I'm sorry?
No, that's, uh, that's, it's put in, it's, the pipe was installed in the same location as the twin twelve inch.
Where is that location? Is it right at the intersection of Mr. Cohen and the abutting property owner's property?
It's pretty much in that corner there, yeah, that's where it was.
How, how did you determine that you didn't put it in the abutting property owner's property?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No.
Is it right at the intersection of where those two properties meet?
It's on his property because there's, there's a, there's property cornerstone that Richard put in. And, uh, and there's a property on all the corners.
So none of that, none of that water coming out elliptical pipe is going into Mr. Cohen's property. It's all coming down the mountain to the abutting property owner's pipe. Is that correct? Part property.
No, I'm.
The property, I, I, listen, I, you, you, uh, Mr. Kessler, you live down, you live close to, uh, Cohen, you're, you're.
Don't let me ask a question we'll never get done.
I'm asking you a question. You live below Richard Cohen.
No, no, you don't get to ask me questions.
I'm sorry, I don't know what I'm talking to. Um.
I have nothing further.
I'm just merely explaining how things are going here. The water's running downhill like it always went. And we didn't change anything.
Of course you did.
Well, well.
Changed every, you changed everything.
Mr. Kessler, Mr. Kessler, Mr. Kessler, let's, Mr. Kessler, please ask a question.
I have no further questions this time.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the public have any questions specifically about the testimony of Mr. Gbowski this evening? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have, uh, Jerry Sweeney. You need to unmute. There you go.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Gerald Sweeney. I'm at Twenty-four Oak Bend in West Orange. Uh, Mr. Gbowski, I did want to clarify, uh, you installed, uh, the riprap in the area for the purpose of reducing soil erosion from water flow. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. That's, that's directed by soil erosion.
Okay.
Soil erosion.
It's okay, I have, uh, specific questions. And was that riprap, would that slow down the pace of water also?
Yeah, pretty much. It contains the water. It, it gives it like a ripple effect and slows down the sediment movement and it's part of, uh, soil, uh, soil management with, uh, these severe rains and storms we get. It, it helps. But, you know, and, and like a tropical storm, yeah, okay, all right.
I just have a couple of questions. So, uh, and then you installed the pipe, you installed the pipe to increase water flow, is that correct?
No, that is not correct.
Well, did you say there was water flow before you installed those pipes or removed the old?
There was two, well, if you're aware of it, there was two twelve inch petrified clay pipes that were compromised due to, uh, age and nature, roots and trees. It was busted up, so we, so we replaced it.
Blocked and clogged?
Oh, yeah, they're clogged. Yeah, they're all clogged up. They weren't working properly.
Okay, so.
So.
In fact, there was no water flowing down the pipes.
Oh, yeah, they're flowing over the pipe. It was flowing over.
Okay, but you installed.
They're blocked up. You ever see a blocked up pipe? Where's the water gonna go? It's gonna go somewhere, it goes over.
Right, that's what happens. That's why you installed pipes, the water would flow down?
Okay.
Well, pretty much, it's just replace what was there.
Okay, so sum that up, you installed riprap to, uh, prevent erosion and slow the water and the pipes to increase the water flow down the mountain.
There, there's no increase. You have a, you have water coming down, a slope, it water runs downhill, no matter what, it, it goes, it doesn't. Unless you have a level plane where the water can level out.
Let me get the next question, so you don't get argumentative.
What's, or something else?
Okay, okay, next question, please.
Did you install the, uh, the riprap before or after the, uh, retaining wall was installed?
I object, there is no question about any wall. It's a temporary wall.
Okay, was there a retaining wall on the site when you installed the riprap?
Yes, there was.
Okay, had, did you install it?
There was one there, but it was probably historically, it was, it was, um, how would I say it? Typically it's broken down and it wasn't, uh, how would I say, we just rebuilt it, that's what we did. It was, uh, it needed to be.
Uh, what was the source of the, uh, the riprap and the rebuilding for the wall? Was that from the site or did you? Did you?
I object to any questions about the wall. You didn't testify to the wall.
Wall material was from the site.
He just testified about the wall, but I'll, but I'll.
No, you asked him a question.
I'll, I'll limit it. What was the source of the riprap that you installed?
It was all from the site.
Okay, you, uh, you excavate, uh, bedrock?
Well, that's the source, yeah, yeah.
Well, from the site.
Yeah, yes. And, well, are you aware of the site, what, what was going on? Look.
Just, just let him ask his question.
Okay, ask the question, okay.
Do you remember where on the site you removed that bedrock?
Oh, yeah.
Where?
His backyard.
Right near the slope?
No, no, right up against his house, actually. We're like, I don't know, twenty feet away from it. That's where the most of the, most of the material was.
Okay, so you mentioned that you, uh, helped rebuild the retaining wall. Was that done simultaneously with the riprap installation?
I am going to object. There's no testimony about a wall. And we keep going back to that. And Mr. Chairman, he came here at the request of the chair to testify concerning his cleaning of the ditch and his placement of the riprap. The question was whether he altered the direction of the ditch. He's testified to that. We're not gonna go far afield as Mr. Sweeney is trying to do.
Uh, excuse me, I wasn't going far afield. I asked questions about what he's just testified to. Uh, I'm sorry if you didn't hear, but I heard him say that he rebuilt the wall and he re, rebuilt the existing wall and he put in the riprap and the source of the stones was the bedrock on the site.
That's fair, okay.
Okay, I, then I'll, uh, I'll end my questions, uh, so that we can have some, uh, uh, progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, one more question, uh, Mr. Gbowski, what, what, what type of equipment did you use to clean the ditch and prepare it to put the rip, riprap down in?
It was a track excavator. Okay, if you're familiar with the excavators, a caterpillar.
Yes, I am.
Excavator, okay.
And was there any possibility that the ditch had moved even a foot, one way or the other, or no?
No, no, we just, no, we just followed where the water was flowing through the ditch.
Okay, um, it, right now it is nine twenty and we're gonna take a five-minute bio break. Okay.
I'm not sure why Mr. Simon's hands raised.
He wants to speak.
Oh, okay.
He'll be next up.
No worries here.
Thank you. Mr. Simon, you'll be next when we get back into the queue.
It's hard. I need to turn this around. Okay, there. I'm sorry, I can't work around corners.
You're doing good. You're doing good. Thank you.
This is my first.
Hey, everybody, come on back. Okay, back on the record, guys. Megan, will we back on the record?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Simon.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Grabowski, good evening.
Good evening.
For how long have you worked for Mr. Cohen or the Waymaker?
Since 2021.
When in 2021 did you start to work for Mr. Cohen or the Waymaker?
It was June, somewhere around June.
It is only the Waymaker, Mr. Simon.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I'm hopefully gonna ask this only once. I'm asking questions of this witness. I do not want Ms. Trillo to interject. If she has an objection, she can make an objection. I don't need her testimony. I'm just seeking testimony from Mr. Grabowski. Thank you.
Okay, fair enough.
My name is Triolo.
Okay, Mr. Triolo. If you have an objection, you'll just you'll say you have an objection. We'll stop. We'll discuss it and we'll move forward from there. Thank you.
I object to his questions because this witness is here to testify with regard to his contract with the Waymaker LLC.
Okay, and Mr. Simon, keep keep that in mind.
Right, thank you. And I'm sorry I mispronounced your name, Ms. Triolo. Mr. Grabowski, when you were first started working for the Waymaker in June of 2021, was that pursuant to a written contract?
Pretty much, yeah, yes.
When you say pretty much, what do you mean by that, sir?
Well, it's a family business. I don't see everything. My my brothers and my sister and all. You know, we get these jobs and they say, hey, go up to you know, Wes to the job and you're gonna start this job. So I didn't physically see anything, but I presume there's something there.
So did the Waymaker hire you or hire your family company?
Yeah, it's Grabowski Construction, yeah.
And is there? I understand. Thank you. Is there a written contract between the Waymaker and Grabowski Construction?
Yes. I'd say yes, because we wouldn't start anything like that, yeah.
And and what was the contract for? What was the subject of the contract?
So backyard, I guess, pool and improvements to the backyard. Poolhouse, pool and
And and what what was Grabowski Construction actually hired to do with regard to the pool and the poolhouse?
Site work. Just strictly site work. Excavation. We did some blasting up here and we did it's underground storm storm and roof drains and sewer cups and I think we put a water line in, stuff for the pool. Falls under the building department, I guess. They were up here.
Yeah, did um in connection with your work, when I say your work, Mr. Grabowski, I'm gonna be referring to Grabowski Construction based on your representation. When you when you did the work starting in June of 2021, as you just described, did you apply for permits from the Township of West Orange to do that work?
No, we don't. It's it's Richard Richard Cohen's responsibility.
So Mr. Cohen, when you say Mr. Cohen's responsibility, is it his responsibility as the manager of the Waymaker LLC to your knowledge or in some other capacity?
Mr. Chairman, I'm I'm going to object and try to move this along. Mr. Grabowski came here to testify concerning the ditch and we are backing into a very long examination that has nothing to do with what SCD instructed him to do in the ditch.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Triolo, as much as she wants to and repeatedly is trying to through the course of this proceeding, trying to, pardon my pun, it is intentional, channel the narrative of this application. Any member of the public, including an attorney who is fired by a member of the public, is certainly permitted to cross-examine any witness that is presented by the applicant as to any subject matter deemed relevant to his testimony, including challenging his credibility, challenging the foundation for his opinions, challenging issues in terms of the work that he actually performed and whether he performed it with permits or not. Every question I'm asking him is a relevant question going to the crux of this application, what the applicant is seeking and the purpose for which they're presenting Mr. Grabowski, including which allows the public to question him as to the work he performed at the property. That's what I'm asking him.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Grabowski has been. Go ahead.
Let Mr. Triolo quickly.
Mr. Grabowski was presented for limited testimony to answer questions by the board concerning the ditch and the riprap. We are not here and did not present Mr. Grabowski to testify to the entire application that preceded by permits, approvals, and is not part of stormwater management.
Miss, okay, Miss Triolo, you you.
Wait, 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 Mr. Simon, ask you ask your question again. Ask your question again, please.
I just want to make a statement. Because I have to, unfortunately.
Oh, okay, Mr. Simon.
That this witness was not subpoenaed by the board. He's presented by the applicant in support of the application because they want to get an approval.
The application is for stormwater management.
Well, I'm not telling you what witnesses to present, Miss Triolo. You decided to present Mr. Grabowski and I'm asking him relevant questions. I'm ready to go on. So, Mr. Grabowski, with regard to the work that you performed, so other than the site work and what you described, when, oh, I know the question I asked. Do you know in what capacity Mr. Cohen applied for those permits, if he applied at all?
No, I don't.
Miss, wait a minute.
Stop, stop, stop. Everybody stop. Okay. Mr. Simon, move on. We're not gonna that's that's a function of administration. It really doesn't give the planning board members more insight into the stormwater management. Okay, I'm gonna ask you to move on.
I'm okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a proffer here.
Thank you.
Wrote a really, really long letter. Took me a lot of time.
Yes.
And the and the reason for that is that there are serious violations of the township's ordinances regarding stormwater management and slope disturbance. Mr. Grabowski just testified 40 seconds ago that he performed all the site work at the property since June of 2021. I asked him if he applied for any permits or approvals in connection with that site work. The answer was no. That Mr. Cohen was the one who's responsible for applying. My only question I asked him, Mr. Chairman, is do you know, if you know, in what capacity did Mr. Cohen make those applications, if at all?
Fine.
And if he doesn't know, he doesn't know, and I'm gonna move on to my next question.
Absolutely. Mr. Grabowski, do you know the answer to that question?
No, I don't know. The responsibility was for Richard Cohen to do that paperwork.
And 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 with regard to your work, Mr. Grabowski, or on behalf of Grabowski Construction, did you have occasion to review any of the surveys or plans created in with regard to any of the work performed between June of 2021 and the present?
Yes, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, wait a second. Mr. Chairman, we are not going back to 2021. This is a stormwater management application. The has nothing to do with what he did in 2021. He testified limited, and I know you're shaking your head, Mr. Simon, but unfortunately, this witness was requested and we did not require a subpoena. He came in to testify as to the ditch.
If if he doesn't know the answer, the answer is no, and we move on. That's how simple it is.
Yeah, but we're gonna sit here until 11 o'clock at night with him badgering this witness about matters that were permitted, constructed, inspected, and approved.
Ms. Triolo, let the let Mr. Grabowski state the answers, okay? Go right ahead, Mr. Simon. Let's see where we go.
Mr. Grabowski, in your work at the property, and when I say the property, 40 Eagle Ridge Way, is the property I'm asking you a question about. Did you have occasion to review any of the plans or surveys in connection with the work that you performed?
Yes, I looked at the plans.
And when you say you looked at the plans, what plans do you look at, if you recall?
Whatever blueprints of the site, the pool and the poolhouse and there was a retaining wall that went up alongside of the property. I think that was a poured concrete wall and it was all done through approvals of the building department. The building department approves it. Approved.
Do you know which plan or plans specifically that you refu that you reviewed?
No, Mr. Chairman.
The answer is no, we're gonna move.
We are. We are treading into work that was permitted, constructed, and approved. We are not, I I I don't understand why he is asking him about matters, number one, that he did not testify to, and number two, that are irrelevant to this application. This application is for stormwater management. We already provided the Township of 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 West Orange and the plan as the planning board all of the permits that were issued. The building department has recognized all of the permits that were issued.
Triolo, Ms. McGovern.
Yes.
On this.
Can I'm sorry, what was the can I do what?
Way in on this because we were having a a little disagreement about what the latitude is for Mr. Grabowski to answer questions.
Well, we don't get very far with the question because we get a lot of interruptions. I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that if the answer is no, you move on. I think if you start getting into more developed facts that run afield, then you stop it, like you would do with anybody else asking a question.
Okay. Mr. Simon, if you could focus more on the stormwater management system.
I'm I'm I want to focus on the questions that I want to ask with all due respect to this witness in terms of the work that he performed on the property since 2021 that are relevant to stormwater discharge. That is my that is my scope of my questions based on the testimony that Mr. Grabowski presented and the answers that he gave to questions from the public, from the board, from the board's professionals.
Okay, so we're gonna right now, I'm gonna ask you to bypass on anything referring to applications to the town, evaluations by the town. Focus on the stormwater management. Let's move on from 2021 if we can get to like 2023.
Mr. Grabowski, when you came across the two broken clay pipes and you stated that they were not working property properly, excuse me, they were blocked up and that water went over the pipe. Where was the water going to?
Down the hill. Right where always went.
So.
Familiar with the site? I mean, it's that you could see where it travels. There's always something coming down the mountain there.
Was there any site work or disturbance performed in the area where you replaced the clay pipes with the elliptical pipe?
I understand the question.
Did you perform any site work in the area where you replaced the two clay pipes with the elliptical pipe? Did you do any soil disturbance in that area?
We put the riprap in there, the pipe and the riprap went in. Like a 48-inch riprap.
So you performed site disturbance in connection with the installation of that elliptical pipe, did you not?
In the form of the question, I don't know what I mean.
The director of soil erosion told us to go in there.
I know they did, but he's using terms that are not related to what.
Mr. Grabowski, did soil erosion did not tell you to go in and replace the clay pipes with the elliptical pipe, correct?
No, right, correct.
And 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 soil erosion did not permit you or did not instruct you to engage in any disturbance of soil in connection with the removal of the clay pipes or the install and or the installation of the elliptical pipe, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. Now, and you did not submit any plans or drawings to the to the Hudson Exex Vesake Soil Conservation District in connection with the installation, the removal of the pipes or the installation of the elliptical pipe, correct? the installation, the removal of the pipes or the installation of the elliptical pipe, correct?
Correct, yeah, okay.
Correct. And with regard to the the, the deficiency notice that you rece- that the property owner received in November of twenty twenty three from the Soil Conservation District that simply stated that riprap needed to be installed at the conduit outlet swell head wall. Is that your recollection of what it said?
Well, that's just like a boilerplate saying, that's just, they have that in every, uh, they call like a vi- not a violation, but what they call it here.
Deficiency.
Deficiency, it's pretty much, yeah, they just put that in there stating that it's got to be done from end to end, so the beginning to the end.
When, when, where did it say that it had to be done from end to end? I didn't see that in the deficiency notice. Verbal?
It was a verbal, yeah, it was verbal.
Okay.
After you get the.
Right, and, and, and didn't the deficiency notice also state that the approved limit of soil disturbance had been exceeded? And that the property owner was to submit a revised soil erosion sediment control plan for review approval? I'm, I'm asking, Mr. Grabowski.
I know, I can't, I can't, no, I can't answer that. I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that at all.
Okay.
I wasn't told or anything.
Okay.
Okay, and did you also perform work for the property owner of forty two Eagle Ridge Way during the time that you performed work at forty Eagle Ridge Way?
I object, Mr. Chairman, that has nothing to do with what's before this board.
Mr. Simon, on that one.
No, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a proffer. So. Well, let me actually, I'll make the proffer after, after I ask the follow-up question. When you installed riprap in the drainage ditch, did any portion of that drainage ditch encroach upon the property commonly known as forty two Eagle Ridge Way?
Whatever was existing, I don't have a survey and no, just, I just, I just put it in wherever that water was traveling. I, I, I'd have to.
That's it.
I'd have to get back.
Wait, wait, Miss. I would ask Ms. Triolo, the Chair, to instruct Ms. Triolo not to coach the witness and let him answer the questions himself. Thank you.
He is answering the questions. I was stopping him from being redundant, much like you are. Go ahead.
Mr. Triolo, Mr. Triolo, I'll decor him, please. We're gonna try.
So you don't, so, uh, Mr. Grabowski, you don't know when you performed those, the, the riprap installation, if you were performing it part, partly on forty two Eagle Ridge Way, correct?
Um, yeah, I don't, I can't answer, I'm not sure of that.
That, that's.
I just followed the water.
I get it, I get it. So, um, you, you, you just follow the water. So, when you were, um, when you removed the uh, clay pipes, as you stated, and, and, and I think you stated, uh, Mr. Grabowski, was it like forty feet, linear feet, or was it more?
Eh, forty, fifty feet, so because a lot of it was busted up.
Okay.
When you say. From years, I guess, of decay.
Kind of when you say busted up, you're being cracked, or?
Well, it's like you ever drop a dish on the tile floor, like it's, that's what type of material it is. It's like a porcelain material. It's very fragile, it cracks into many pieces. So it looked like, you know, you could see the remnants of, there was only two existing pipes that were there at the edge of the, uh, at the end of the, of the run. So that's the only thing that was, that was visible. You could took, you kind of see, uh, the shape of the pipe, but the rest of it was, was compromised severely.
And, and, and the length of the elliptical pipe that you installed in its place, um, that was also approximately fifty feet in linear, uh, length?
Yeah, it could be fifty, sixty feet.
Six, so it was, so it was.
I don't have exact measurements. I do a lot of jobs.
Yeah, that's all right. No, no, I understand. Um, but in, to your recollection, the pipe that was installed, the elliptical pipe, to take a place of the clay pipes was longer than the two, uh, clay pipes, correct?
Eh, you might say a little bit, yeah.
And, and do you know, because you didn't look at a survey when you did this work, do you know whether that work of the removal of the clay pipes or the installation of the elliptical pipe partially encroached on either forty two Eagle Ridge Way and or lot eleven to the south, which is owned by Llewellyn Park? Do you have any idea?
It's pretty close, but if you want to get exact, you probably got to get a surveyor to do it, to check it, because I, I don't have that capabilities of surveying in that location. But I know we're, we're within reason of, uh, staying in that property, whatever you're, with, within range, I'd say.
Right, okay, um, and when when you, um, performed, as you stated in your testimony, um, the work relating to the, to the retaining wall, was, was there any particular plan that you followed to your recollection during your work?
Uh, pretty much what was there, it was like a historical old wall there, and we just merely tried to rebuild it to what was there. It's like a typical, um, how would I say it? Boulder wall detail where you just stack rocks like they had, and you make it wide on the bottom and taper it up to the top, so you, it's a typical boulder wall detail. Which was one there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead. I'm sorry, I, I interrupted you.
Yeah, and then, uh, we're merely re- reconstructing it to, to what was almost there.
So, um, you performed, uh, grading, um, or disturbance of the site in the area of that rear yard, uh, beyond that retaining wall, correct? As part of your.
No, no, we had, we had stakes put in. There was two corner stakes that were in, and I, and, uh, you know, during the site work, we had to have them to scale off of where we're putting all the other infrastructure. So, no, those were, those were surveyed and they were, they were definitely on target there.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't, I didn't ask you that. I just asked you that, um, that you performed, um, grading and disturbance in the rear of the site, right? Rear of the property.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's part of the.
It was part of, part of the job, right?
Yeah, yeah, it was, we put some, uh, we put ten seepage tanks in and, and, uh, to control the stormwater. We got ten large tanks in there. It's a big field.
When, when did you put those ten, when did you put those ten large tanks in there, Mr. Grabowski?
I have to get back. I don't have those dates in front of me. I, I wasn't expecting this, so. I would have brought more information. Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. And prior to, um, well, let me, let me just ask you that. When you were performing work at forty Eagle Ridge Way, you were also performing work at forty two Eagle Ridge Way, correct?
Mr. Chairman.
No, we did. We, 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 we had a demolition permit taken out, and we took down Mrs. Smith's old house.
Mr. Chairman, we are again wondering, Mr. Chairman, I fi- I said, I object.
Hang on, everyone, hang on.
Talk when Mr. Simon's talking. Now we're really going far afield. This is a limited examination. We have engineers to still do tonight.
Mr. Triolo, hang in there. Mr. Simon, focus on this property, please. Let's not go off the property.
I, I'm just asking if you did work on forty two during the time.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Triolo.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs.
May I ask why Mr. Simon has unlimited time compared to all the other residents? We want to finish this application this evening.
I understand. He's a, he's an attorney representing objectors, that's why. Okay, Mr. Simon, we're gonna.
Understand, but he's, he's going far afield and wasting time. We need to get on to the other issues.
Bringing him back to where we need to be. Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Simon.
Thank you.
Mr. Grabowski, um, you're not an engineer, correct?
No.
You have no training in stormwater management, correct?
I have training in the field. I'm field experienced.
Field, in field and site work?
Yes, the, a lot of years and pretty much got my experience through, through fieldwork.
Right.
And I follow, you know, I follow the plans.
Yeah, and, and, and what, um, which engineer were you in consultation with during the time you performed your work at forty Eagle Ridge Way?
Uh, this, uh, I think it was Matt Arazo. Matt Arazo?
Matt Arazo, okay. Other than, um, and by the way, um, right now, you're providing testimony, I guess, in, in Ms. Triolo's office. Is there anyone in the room there with you besides Ms. Triolo?
Just me and her.
Okay, I just saw some hands, I apologize. Um, so other than Mr. Mr. Matt Arazo, did you consult with any, uh, other or did you speak to any other engineer regarding the, uh, the project or the work that you performed, uh, at forty Eagle Ridge Way?
All right, I don't, can you repeat that again? Well, this is.
Uh, you, you testified a moment ago that you, you spoke to Mr. Matt Arazo in connection with the work that you performed at forty Eagle Ridge Way. Um, what, first of all, when did you start, um, communicating with Mr. Matt Arazo regarding the work that you performed?
Uh, he's hired by the Richard Cohen. I, I just, we're never on a verbal basis. He would just come out and stake out things or give me a, you know, maybe a cut sheet for, for the pool or the building, so I never had any in-depth conversations with him about the site.
Okay.
That's all upon, that's all Richard Cohen.
And you never can, uh, discussed, um, the removal of the clay pipe or the, the installation of the elliptical pipe with Mr. Matt Arazo, correct?
No, not, no.
No, you did not?
No.
Okay. Just give me a second. And prior to, um, since I was not asked, I, I was not instructed to be allowed to ask any questions about forty two Eagle Ridge Way.
Yes.
Um, prior, prior to twenty twenty one or June of twenty twenty one, have you performed work at forty Eagle Ridge Way?
No.
Okay, nothing further. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Hey. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Scott, based on everything you've heard, do you have any other questions or comments?
I, I have no other questions or comments from, uh, Mr. Grabowski.
Good stuff. Okay, Ms. Triolo, on next. So we're gonna, that's the end of public comments, public questions for Mr. Grabowski.
May I, may, let me turn this around. I'm sorry, give me my, my secret, my tank. Okay. Um, may I, um, allow Mr. Grabowski to leave?
Uh, I don't see anybody else asking any questions. I don't see, I don't see why not. Thank you very much, Mr. Grabowski, for your testimony.
All right, may I just have exactly thirty seconds so I can let him leave?
Go right ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt one second. There's a hand in the gallery, DeCheser. It's Olivia or Oliver DeCheser, sorry.
One more question, Mr. 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 Triolo, Mr. Grabowski, get one more question.
He did have his hand raised during the testimony.
Catch him.
Okay, go catch him.
I have to go catch him.
Go catch him, go catch.
Okay, Oliver, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, um, my name is Oliver DeCheser. I live at thirty five Mountain Avenue in West Orange. I'm, uh, down the hill from, from the property in question. I'm along the stream that they're talking about.
Okay, your question.
I don't think this is here yet.
Wait, wait for Mr. Grabowski to come back so we can hear the question, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Right. Okay. All right.
Okay.
I'll say, ready? Okay.
Um, I was just wondering, so I heard that you removed two twelve inch pipes and replaced them with a thirty six inch elliptical pipe, which is about four times as much flow. I was just wondering, like, why, if like, there was a reason you were anticipating such an increase in flow through the pipe? I mean, tw- two twelve inch to one thirty six inch elliptical is going from two hundred twenty six square inches to one thousand seventeen, just about four and a half times. I was just wondering why that increase was necessary.
Well, it's, uh, it's a wider pipe. It creates a better sheet flow, even though we did not increase the water. There's no increase of water on the site. Uh, flow-wise, it's, it's done for maintenance in case, sometimes you get trees and limbs that come through the pipe, and a smaller pipe blocks up much easier. And if that happens, then the pipe gets breached, then, then it just goes all over the place, and water just spreads out. So, uh, our, my thoughts on it was just to put a wider pipe in, never mind in the height, but just to get something wider to create a better sheet flow and then less problems with, with breaching.
These eggs are then fertilized using sperm from a male salmon. After fertilization, the eggs are placed in tanks with precise conditions.
What? What is that?
Yep, I understand. Um, that's my only question.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski.
Sign off? Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to sign off so he can leave.
Okay.
I'll be right back in thirty.
One more question then.
Okay, okay. Ma'am, I'm sorry, Mr. Grabowski, Ma'am McCartney, last question.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Grabowski, thank you. Um, so if you're saying that you're not increasing the flow of the water, where is the water going? Is it being captured somewhere?
Well, it, it sits the end of that ditch, that drainage ditch.
And where does that end?
It ends right at the property line of forty Eagle Ridge Way. And all that water that is collecting in that ditch comes from surrounding properties. It does not come from forty Eagle Ridge Way. It comes from the point. The point has property, uh, across the street. And then it comes, there's a, also a storm pipe that comes down the old Eagle Ridge Drive, if you're familiar with that old street. That comes from the point, and then there's another pipe that's, uh, north of forty, that's also coming in from the point. It's a crystal point, yeah.
Uh-huh, and it just happens to be on this property, but where does it go? Is it being captured somewhere? Is it just going?
No, it's not captured, it flows. It doesn't get captured, it flows.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the issue. All right, thank you. That's the issue.
That's what we're hoping to solve last week.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
Okay, Mr. Uh, one last question, Mr. Simon.
All right.
One follow-up question.
Here we go.
Follow-up question. Thank you, Mr. Grabowski.
Um, sure.
In the, in the area where you performed the riprap work uh, for the drainage ditch, did that, first, that encompass the entire, um, what we'll call the right side of the property as you're standing on Eagle Ridge Way?
Okay, if you position yourself in front of Richard Cohen's house.
Yes.
It's all the properties across the street to the left and right. There are a series of pipes that are underneath Eagle Ridge Way that capture water from the point in three locations. And it ends up at that drainage ditch.
You misunderstand my question. I'm just asking you, where, where you installed the riprap?
Right.
Where precisely did you, did you install the riprap along the entirety of the common lot line between forty Eagle Ridge Way and forty two Eagle Ridge Way?
We just did, um, I guess I'd say half of it that was required by the Soil Conservation.
I'm sorry, so was it the, was it, was it the half hall that was, uh, toward the rear of the property?
I, yeah, yeah, there's the rear from the rear up to, uh, to where it flattens out, because when you get closer to the house, there's only like a half a percent of grade, and the water just gets stagnant there. After that, the, the water slope increases, and that's where we needed to put the riprap. It's like four percent slope.
Uh, uh, you need to s- So in that area, where you, where you installed the riprap? Were, were there trees and vegetation in that area as of the time you started working in June of twenty twenty one?
Uh, yeah, there was, there was, uh, vegetation in where the, the stream was. That's where we had to. The stream was, that's where we had to clean and put the riprap, and that's where the. As far as trees, there's no trees in the way.
No, I'm I'm not asking whether you, you already testified to that, I'm not asking that, I'm asking you whether. Uh, from June of twenty twenty-one, when you started working for. Um, your company started working for the Waymaker, were there trees and vegetation in the area where you did the riprap work?
Yeah, yeah, no, there's, there was there, but then twenty-three, they wanted us to put riprap in.
Right, but but right, but I'm saying, so when you say they wanted you to put riprap in, did that require you to remove any vegetation?
It's like debris of like rotted woods and roots and stuff that were just falling into the ditch. So we had, instead of me putting, instead of me putting riprap on top. You know, I had to take that out because riprap, you need eighteen inches thick. So it works properly because it's eight-inch, ten-inch rock.
So what about, what what about live trees and vegetation from June of twenty twenty-one? Um, to the time you you did that work with the riprap, was there trees and vegetation in that area?
I have to object, Mr. Chairman, again. He testified that SCD told him to. Um, clean the ditch and put the riprap in in twenty twenty-three, received a violation in twenty twenty-three. He's testified that he didn't work in that area, that he worked on the pool and the poolhouse. Now he's trying to say in twenty twenty-one, I I, did he take a tour of the property? I mean, I, I'm, I'm losing it and he wants to leave.
Well, no, in twenty-one and twenty-two, the pandemic came, we didn't do nothing there. Okay, he wasn't even there.
So that's the answer, he wasn't there.
Okay, are we done now?
I mean, that's, that's, all right.
Good.
We're done. We are done.
Okay, thank you.
Good show. Okay, she's walking him out, thirty seconds.
Okay, Mr. Grabowski has left. I thank you very much for your patience. Over the last two days, we received letters from Mr. Simon and from. New World Matrix raising issues that. Um. Well. Putting aside my opinion of the issues, uh, there were various engineering issues. Uh, or purported engineering issues raised, and at. My understanding is that Mr. Simon has retained the services of Bowman Engineering. I would like to propose to the board that. If Mr. Keller from Bowman is going to testify to what is in Mr. Simon's. Letter that he sent to the board on March the tenth. Um, that we, since his missive is already as part of the record. Uh, can we eliminate Mr. Keller repeating everything? And occupying the time of this board, and I will just go. Uh, limit Mr. Keller to anything new other than what is in Mr. Simon's letter. And then we can jump to Colliers Engineering and their rebuttal, so we can get done this evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, uh, the, give me a second, second, I wanna digest all of this.
Yeah.
So I, Miss Triolo, I I've read um. The report. And Mr. Simon's letter. Um. The board. Does not need to hear everything regurgitated. Uh, item by item. But I I think a uh. A five-minute overview. And anything new would not be out of the question, and then questions of Mr. Keller would be definitely appropriate. Mr. Simon, how is that?
I, 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 I'm sorry. With all due, with all due respect.
I I guess.
These matters, these matters.
Yes.
If they are appealed, are based on the record below. And is based on the testimony of witnesses, late witnesses, and expert witnesses. At the conclusion of the last meeting. I was asked. If we would provide a summary, which I did, of Mr. Keller's testimony.
Yes.
So that the board would be aware. And prepared. As would Miss Triolo. As to. The. Areas that Mr. Keller will be covering in his testimony.
Yes.
My letter to the board was not intended in any way, shape, or form to take the place of. Testimony from Mr. Keller. A professional engineer that will be duly sworn to provide testimony.
Nor can you.
So. Nor could I.
That the attorney can't give an opinion of an engineer.
Absolutely not.
I'm going to.
I did it as a cur-, I did it as a courtesy at the request of this board.
Simon, we appreciate that immensely, so Ms. McGovern, I'm gonna ask for your advice.
Well. I agree that if this case gets appealed, a judge is going to look at um who testified. And that letter is effectively Mr. Simon testifying.
Right.
But he's testi-, he summarized what could be expected like an expert report, but you still need to have the expert. At least hit the high points, um, and that the board has to have the opportunity to question that expert.
Mr. Simon, can we hit the high points?
I'm, I'm gonna try to.
I wanna meet, I wanna meet.
Be as efficient as possible, okay, I I will tell you that. Through numerous hearings now, where it's eleven minutes after ten, that the public has not had an opportunity to. Present any witness, so this is the first opportunity for the public to do so. And so we wanna be thorough and comprehensive and give the board. All the information so that they can make an informed decision on the application.
And I appreciate that. And I am just going.
My, my, my respectful uh suggestion is, let's get Mr. Keller sworn and qualified. And and get into it. And um I will try to be, as I always am, as efficient as possible.
I appreciate that, okay, let's go, Mr. Keller, are you here?
I think we have to bring him over.
We bring, uh, can we uh bring him over?
Sure, can I raise his hand?
Into the light? Yes.
I s-, I I see him. Okay, coming in now.
Okay.
There you go.
Mr. Keller, here he is, Ms. Uh, McGovern, will you swear in, Mr. Keller?
I will, as soon as I can find him, oh, Eric, okay. Mr. Keller, can you turn on your, you have to take yourself off mute and put yourself on the camera.
I I apologize, my, my wifi connection crashed as you guys were talking.
Oh, gosh.
Went back in.
Usually the way it happens, okay, Mr. Keller, please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Simon, Mr. Keller is well-known to the planning board. Uh, his credentials uh are irrefutable, and I will ask one question of him if that's okay.
Yes, my license is still in good standing.
There you go, he knows me, he knows me.
I I do.
Unless any members of the planning board have any questions, we accept Mr. Keller as a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, go right ahead, Mr. Simon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Keller, um, as part of this. Um, application, have you had the opportunity to review the application materials, including those that were contained? Uh, on the link to the um, to the agenda for this uh, for this application?
Yes, I have reviewed most, if not all, of the documents.
And you reviewed the, the pertinent ordinances regarding stormwater management, steep slope as part of this application?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and you've been present for the testimony of the applicant's various. Uh, witnesses with regard to this application?
Yes, I have.
And you have an oppo-, if you had the opportunity to review. Um, the letter that I submitted to the board on March tenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, outlining some concerns on behalf of Llewellyn Park.
Yes, I have.
Um, and by the way, Mr. Chairman, um, do I need to formally mark that letter? Uh, for identification, I know it's on, my understanding is that. It is on the website, on, on the agenda.
Yes.
And I happened to notice five minutes ago, when I, when I went to check. Then Miss Triolo apparently wrote a letter to the board today and did not copy me, so I read it for the first time five minutes ago, thank you very much, Miss Triolo. I appreciate the professional courtesy, so do, so I don't need then to, so I don't need then to mark uh that. Uh, letter, because it's deemed in evidence, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Already part of the record.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Keller, you've had an opportunity to review that letter?
Uh, briefly.
Okay, and.
I just happened to find it when I was going back to the agenda.
Talking about the le-, the letter that I submitted to the board.
Oh, your letter, oh, yes, I've read that in detail, yes.
Yes, and you reviewed that letter in detail, and based on your detailed review of that letter. Do you agree with its, uh, as a professional engineer, with its statements and conclusions? Um, that were set forth therein, subject to any supplemental testimony you're gonna provide this evening?
Yes, I do.
And so, um, as the board, well, why don't you start out by just sort of reiterating. Um, why it is that you're, you're here tonight on behalf of Llewellyn Park? And then we can get into some of the specifics.
And I will do my best to be direct and to the point and brief. Uh, we have worked for Llewellyn Park on their stormwater issues throughout the park for quite a while. And uh, they brought to our attention as part of that. Uh, an increase in flow coming from the properties uphill of the park. In the vicinity of Mountain Avenue. Um, because of our familiarity with the park, uh, that's how we became involved in this case and looking at. The uh stormwater conditions that have changed over time in the past few years. Uh, associated with that property above. Um. Just the township's stormwater ordinance. Uh, is very clear, uh, it is consistent with the state regulations. Um, as to what constitutes a major development. And what the content of a stormwater plan and report needs to be. For a major development. Um, and I won't go through it, it's in your letter, everybody can read it, but the bottom line is that. The report needs to look at what the conditions were in two thousand and four, it is a cumulative impact. Um, and the report that has been submitted. Uh, and has been discussed in these hearings. Uh, is incomplete and does not cover. The total disturbance and change in land cover. That has occurred on this property. Um, and because of that. Uh. There are significant immaterial deficiencies. In the documents before this board for the board to consider. Um. And so. I think that's a summary of.
Right, that's as as to why you're here.
Right.
So, so let me start, um. You're aware that uh, Mr. Scott, the, the board engineer submitted a letter. Of March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, addressed to the board, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, you've had an opportunity to review that, that letter?
Uh, yes, late today, I did.
Okay, and you're aware that a portion of that letter uh states that. Based on the pre and post-development conditions, uh imagery from Bowman Consulting. Uh, nineteen fifty-nine and twenty-ten aerial topographic maps from the township. That it is evident that the applicant has relocated the drainage ditch. That is currently shown to run along the property line between forty and forty-two Eagle Ridge Way.
We could have, if we could have questions instead of testimony from Mr. Simon, it would be helpful.
I'm not providing testimony, I'm laying a foundation for the question I'm asking him, Miss Triolo. I will continue.
You're assuming, you're assuming facts that are not true.
But are you, are you, but Miss Triolo. Are you questioning that Mr. Scott issued a letter to the board dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-five?
No.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. Keller. It goes on to state. That the relocation of the ditch is the primary reason for the increased and concentrated runoff leading to negative flooding impacts. Into Llewellyn Park that is located downstream from forty and forty-two Eagle Ridge Way. Uh, it goes on to talk about um, that the planning board should not take action, and the rest of the letter speaks for itself. Um, do you agree with those statements and conclusions set forth in Mr. Scott's letter to the board? Of March eleventh, twenty twenty-five?
I do.
And. Um, in your review of the ordinances, and particularly the stormwater management ordinance set forth at section twenty-five dash twenty-nine. Of the township code, um. What is your position in terms of how this project is to be considered? In terms of stormwater impacts based on its history of development?
Right, I kinda jumped the gun on, on, on that one.
Okay, we just wanna go back to that, go ahead.
So. Um. The, the township regulations are clear, the state regulations are clear, and that. Stormwater ha-, is cumulative back to. Uh, November, I'm sorry, February of two thousand and four. This house did not exist in two thousand and four, the stormwater report and the stormma-, water management systems have to look at. The complete. History and record of the development of this site. Uh, which includes the house, the driveways. That were previously constructed. As well as the pool, the poolhouse. Um, the clearing of vegetation from the entire property. Um, it is also in the stormwater regulations that you have to look at the. Entire tributary area to the point of analysis, the point of analysis is that point where. The. Water course discharged into Llewellyn Park, which is now the location of. This concrete pipe that was installed by Grabowski. That is the point of analysis, you have to look at the entire upstream area to that point and what has changed. That has not been done.
And with regard to the issue of the. And we'll get to it a little bit more about the change in the location of the drainage ditch. Or the water course, do you have any um? Exhibits that you want to um refer to?
I do.
Describing some of that information, can Mr. Um.
Yes.
Keller, screen share, please?
Yes, please.
Um, hold on a second, let me get the right.
And um, it's a color, have these been presented to the planning board, or this is all new documentation to be marked?
Uh, these first two are, are, well, this one that I'm presenting now is new, it is not part of the record.
I will mark it.
Yeah, it's gonna be oh, one.
All right, let me just.
And you're gonna have to supply that to the board secretary uh tomorrow.
Understood.
Or now, I mean, but at least by tomorrow.
Um, just bear with me, um, what's today, three twelve? This.
Wait, hold on, Eric, because it's, it's not coming up on the screen. Wait, hold on, Eric, because it's it's not coming up on the screen. Oh, here it is.
Okay. Sorry.
So so wait, so let's first, um, this is gonna be marked as oh one. And Eric, the first thing I want you to do is just this uh well, first of all, I want you to describe what we're looking at, and then you're gonna give me the date.
Okay. So this is a near map. Near map is a commercially available uh aerial photography subscription that Bowman Consulting uh uses. Uh, it has aerial photography from sometime in twenty fourteen up until twenty twenty four uh and they update it um generally three to four times a year, depending on the location. Um, this has been annotated.
So we're gonna so we're gonna call this near map aerial fo- aerial map, near map aerial map oh one. What's the date of this approximately?
It is dated three twenty twenty one is when the aerial photograph was taken. I have noted at the bottom uh in red, it says pre-development conditions.
Okay, and I don't know if we can see that.
I can.
You can see that?
In red, yeah, at the bottom.
Okay.
Okay, so can Mr. Simon, can we just identify as pre-development conditions for the stormwater management system, not for the building on the site, to clarify? Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. It is pre-development associated with the current construction activities related to the pool and the poolhouse, not to the house itself.
Right, thank you.
I have annotated this plan to approximately show the property lines based upon surveys that are part of the record. And to make it a little clearer, I have drawn a blue line where the water course on in this area uh was historically.
Is is that where where you have, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting here, where where it says pre-existing channel?
Correct.
Is that what you're referring to in blue?
And there's a blue line. And 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 I have other maps that were that are already part of the record uh that are posted that generally show the channel in this location. And
Mister Simon, can you ask Mister Mister Keller, did he put that notation on the map?
I did.
It's Mister Mister Triolo, you can ask all the questions you want when he's done with his direct testimony.
Well, I know I can. I just want some clarification. There's a little square with blue typing and I just wanted to get clarification that the historical map didn't have that typing on it.
Is that correct, Mr. Keller?
Yes, yes, it is. I annotated the map.
Is is it your professional opinion that the area of the map where it's identified as pre-existing channel was a water course that's identified on this aerial uh map from March twentieth of twenty twenty one?
That is correct.
And the orange um lines that are drawn that represents the boundaries of um the forty Eagle Ridge Way property?
That is correct. They're approximate um based on the um features shown on this map. And this is a scalable map uh just approximating the length as a based upon the surveys that have been prepared for this property.
And and what is the significance of oh one relative to this application?
So thi- this shows the two things. One is the conditions of the property before uh which are part of what needs to be incorporated into the stormwater management plan that discusses now that it's a major development. I don't think there's any question that this is a major development because they've disturbed more than one acre of property. The analysis needs to look at the disturbance of the property, the ground cover. Um, and the other point, which is very important to Llewellyn Park, is the fact that this water course has been moved. It is no longer in the location shown on exhibit oh one.
And when you say exhibit oh one, you're talking about the Colliers site plan from twenty twenty four?
No, I'm saying
Yes.
It it's no longer
Oh.
shown where it is on this exhibit, where it's shown on the Materazzo plan, which is part of the record. Um, and the Robert survey that was is part of the record. This document supports the findings uh and and reinforces what is shown on the Materazzo plan and the Robert survey about where the stream was located.
So when I referenced the Colliers site plan from twenty twenty four um and that it was based on the Ostracorn survey from May of twenty twenty four, that shows this water channel in a different location, correct?
Yes, it does. I
And so
I I would, I'm sorry, Mr. Simon. The and I don't have these documents. They're part of the township's files. Mr. Scott had referenced them in his letter. There the township has a nineteen fifty nine topographic survey of the township as well as a twenty ten topographic survey of the township. And the location of this water course is clearly seen on both of those documents in this location as shown on exhibit oh one.
So is it your professional opinion based on exhibit oh one and your review of those other documents that the water channel's location was changed between March of twenty twenty one and twenty twenty four?
Correct.
Is there anything else of significance that you want to point out with regard to oh one?
The other thing I want to point out is the uh stormwater report uh states that um groundwater recharge is not required for this major development. Uh, because it's in a urban re- redevelopment area. It's in a planning area one, the metropolitan planning area. Now, the DEP has clearly stated in their FAQs in the Best Management Practices Manual, the BMP manual, that that does not apply uh to areas that were not previously developed. It's clear in the guidance documents that to claim urban redevelopment, it has to be a previously developed area. As you can see from exhibit oh one, the rear of the property and the adjacent areas contain trees, they contain uh unmaintained areas. They're not all maintained lawn areas. Under the rules, those areas are not considered previously developed. So regardless of the fact that they are in a PA one, groundwater recharge is required to be addressed for the removal of those wooded and natural areas that were not previously developed. The report does not address groundwater recharge.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Is there another exhibit that you want to um present to the board at this time?
Yes, what I'd like to do is to take the same aerial and I have to look at it before.
Okay.
Um, I forget the date, but it is after it's during construction. It is a March twenty one, twenty twenty three aerial.
Are we marking this oh two?
Yes. Is it also a near map aerial map?
Yes, it is. It is also a near map.
So so this is so now we're we are showing uh what we're gonna mark is oh two, which is a near mark near map, excuse me, aerial map dated March twenty first, twenty twenty three, correct?
Correct.
And the language to anticipate Miss Triolo's question where it says post-development channel, is that your addition to this near map aerial map?
Yes, the blue line and this note are annotations that I made to the to this aerial.
And what is the significance of the blue line and the post-development channel annotation on oh two?
What this shows, and this is generally consistent with the Ostracorn survey from May of twenty four, is that the channel no longer follows the path that it had it had done historically as shown on various documents, and this water course is now straight. Um, it's a very simple uh engineering principle. You have an elevation at Eagle Ridge Way. You have an elevation where it meets the Llewellyn Park property line. Those elevations are the same because you're meeting existing conditions at each end, but the distance is now much shorter. So uh slope is vertical change over horizontal length. If the top number doesn't change and the bottom number gets shorter, that means that the water course is steeper. And that's important because the steeper the water course, the higher the velocity. This.
Is there is there anything else that you want to point out or add with regard to oh two?
The other thing that I wanted to point out is the change in land cover to the to the point of analysis, which is where this blue line ends at the eastern side of the property. Um, obviously, the uh the poolhouse uh and the entire rear yard of forty Eagle Ridge Way um is under construction. You can see all the improvements. But you can also see that the land cover has been changed on the property to the south, which is forty two Eagle Ridge Way, and there's other activity going on. All of that impacts on the stormwater, on the flows into Llewellyn Park at this point of analysis. So the stormwater report does not address that all it does is focus on what the ultimate improvements are on forty Eagle Ridge Way. But that is not indicative or representative of the change in land cover that's tributary to the point where that water course leaves or enters upon Llewellyn Park's properties. And that is another deficiency in the report that has been presented to this board.
So between that condition and lack of information um and that the existing home and the associated improvements constructed after two thousand and four are to be included in the assessment of stormwater, and they were not. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And for do you agree that for the board to properly engage in its review responsibilities under the ordinance and applicable law, it has to look at the conditions of the site, both prior and subsequent to the illegal construction activities at the property?
That is correct.
And have you had an opportunity to review the various surveys that were submitted by the applicant? Namely, the Robert survey from February of twenty twenty one, the Robert slope analysis plan from April twenty twenty one, the pool artist site and grading plan from April twenty twenty one, the Materazzo grading plan from December twenty twenty two, the Ostracorn survey from May of twenty twenty four, and the uh Colliers site plan from twenty twenty four?
Yes, I reviewed every one of those documents in detail.
And in my letter of March tenth, I identify in a narrative some relevant um observations, what I believe to be relevant, pertaining to what is shown on those uh various plans. You've had an opportunity to review those narratives in that letter? And do you agree that they are um as I just described them uh noteworthy in terms of the issues before this board?
I do.
And so um what I had, so let's start with based on your review of all of those documents. Um, you've already stated, but just to reiterate, you do believe that the drainage channel was improperly relocated and reduced in length from Eagle Ridge Way?
Correct.
And you believe that its slope had increased? That that all those combinations resulting in the velocity of stormwater in the channel being increased so adversely impact Llewellyn Park?
Yes, as well as the removal of the vegetation comparing in exhibit oh one and the land cover that existed adjacent to that water course and the subsequent during construction interim construction conditions, the lack of vegetation uh and la- ground cover and change in ground cover adjacent to that water course are significant as well as the fact that it's much steeper now.
And in my letter, I um took the position that the drainage ditch water course constitutes a regulated water feature under uh the riparian zone portion of the state regulations um based on the photographs and the twenty twenty one Robert survey showing that there were banks there.
Do you agree with that? Physical condition, I'm sorry, Mr. Simon.
Yeah, first of all, do you do it? Do you agree with that um characterization?
I do.
And and I was interrupting you. What were you gonna say?
So um I forget. Um anyhow, the the applicable regulations are set forth in NJAC seven colon thirteen, which is the Flood Hazard Area Control Act Rules um which establish uh riparian zones adjacent to all water courses that have a defined bed and banks. That is the language in the regulations. It does not, based on the information provided by the point uh the engineer from the point at Crystal Lake, uh it does not uh it does not have a flood hazard area because the tributary area to it is less than fifty acres. But the riparian zone criteria applies regardless of the drainage area. It is defined by the physical characteristic of the water course, which has a defined bed and bank. And that is clear from the aerials. It is clear from the surveys that are part of the record that this had bed and banks and therefore is regulated under seven colon thirteen.
And would be in violation of the regulations?
Disturbance. Disturbance of the stream channel and removal of vegetation within the riparian zone is a violation of those regulations, yes.
My correspondence of March tenth also talks about the, based on the review of those various plans and surveys that I just identified for you, the, the failure to identify, the applicant's failure to identify to the township or the, to the board for that matter, the nature and extent of steep slope disturbance, uh, at, at the property. Um, do you recall reviewing that? And based on your, excuse me?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes.
I've been sitting and listening to Mr. Keller testify concerning his opinion regarding the ditch and vegetation, et cetera. Steep slopes are not part of the stormwater management application. They just aren't.
I'll agree with that. We're not, we're not going to add steep slopes in this right now.
But Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I have, I have quoted line and verse from your ordinance.
I'm not arguing. I'm just saying.
And, and the, but, but, but here's the thing. The township's ordinance specifically with regard to s- steep slopes talks about what the purpose is of the steep slope ordinance. And the purpose of the steep slope ordinance is to control erosion and adverse water conditions affecting adjacent properties.
Agreed.
And whether or not the applicant myopically and conveniently has decided not to ask for erroneously variances for clear steep slope disturbance is absolutely relevant to this board's consideration of this major development, major site plan before this planning board. And the idea that the board would foreclose the public from providing very relevant testimony in terms of steep slope disturbance and how it impacts stormwater management and the fact that the area that was disturbed to install this thirty six inch elliptical pu- pipe is within a slope area exceeding twenty five percent, just in that area.
Testify, oh, you're testifying now.
No, I'm, I'm not intending to testify. I'm trying to make a proffer based on, I'm not testifying. I'm, I'm giving a proffer as to why questions about stormwater management in, in relation to steep slope disturbance at the property, some of which was to illegally install the discharge point of the drainage channel, the thirty six inch pipe is relevant to the board's consideration of this application. And for the board to take the position of saying that we're not dealing with the steep slopes right now. First of all, there's no legal justification. You can't do it because you can't get site plan approval before you apply for variance relief. It's just not permitted under the municipal annuals law. But even more importantly, the, the language, the repeated language in the steep slope ordinance talks about stormwater management. The stormwater management ordinance talks about steep slopes. It's all, it's all relevant.
I, I, I'm not arguing that point. I'm asking, is there anything else about the waterway where it comes from? Or this, the culvert? Before we get into anything with steep slopes, because I have one question before we get there. Are we, are we going right into steep slopes or there's anything, anything else with stormwater management?
And I want to be heard on that. Go ahead.
Okay.
Well, wait, so okay, we can, we can go back to steep slopes when I'm done. Okay, with, 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 so, so Mr. Uh, Keller.
Mr. Simon, I have one question. Maybe because, because I don't understand. Mr. Keller.
Yes, sir.
And if the applicant closed off the access of water on this side of Eagle Ridge Way, sealed it up, would that stop all of the water runoff into Llewellyn Park?
I, I it, it's a conveyance system that has existed since at least nineteen fifty nine, based on the town's Tobo maps. The water from the point at Crystal Lake and from these properties flows down into Llewellyn Park. You can't legally cut off that water and stop it from going into, uh, Llewellyn Park. Llewellyn Park is topographically lower than this area.
Right, but there's a, there's a legal easement with obligations that i- if, if it was possible, I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying if it was possible, if that area on Eagle Ridge Way that comes onto forty Eagle Ridge Way, if that was closed off, would that stop most of the water flow down that culvert into the pipe that goes into Llewellyn Park?
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I don't understand. If, if it was closed off, where?
Uh, on the side of Eagle Ridge Way, there's a pipe that goes from the.
Uh, there's a pipe that goes from this.
Yes.
Wetland area.
Yes.
To.
Yes, right there.
To this point. And it flows down.
Yes, if that, if that were and under, goes under the roadway, if that point was closed off, would that stop?
It's a wetland area. You can't.
Not on the wetland side, not on the wetland side, on the forty side.
You would block it here?
Yes.
Well, then, then this area, the wetland area would not have an outlet for that water. It will continue to build up until it flows over the roadway and will then flow down uncontrolled through forty and forty two and still end up down at, uh, in Llewellyn Park.
That was a question. I'm sorry, Mr. Simon, go right ahead.
No problem. So the drainage channel and the elliptical pipe, uh, stormwater discharge was referenced during Mr. Coakley's testimony, correct, Mr. Keller?
Yes.
And, um, he testified that the proposed, that his proposed drainage plan he prepared covered all stormwater drainage from the site and included modifications of the elliptical pipe system to include an outlet control structure, structure, correct?
That is correct.
And he even testified that some of the water entering that elliptical pipe system comes from the applicant's property, correct?
Correct.
And he also testified though, that the proposed drainage plan provides no reduction of stormwater discharged from the elliptical pipe system through the elliptical pipe directly into Llewellyn Park, correct?
I'm sorry, re- repeat, repeat.
That the proposed, that his proposed drainage plan does not reduce stormwater discharge from that pipe system.
No, the, because the pipe system is carrying offsite flows and, you know, the reductions are applied to the improvements on, on number forty. Um, reductions are not applied to offsite water that is just being conveyed through any property. That makes sense.
Um, it does, it does to me.
Okay, so it does to me, but I do this every day.
Right. So the and you agree that the stormwater ordinance um, includes requirements to show steep slope information and topography within two hundred feet of the subject property, correct?
That's correct. That is clearly stated in twenty five dash twenty nine.
Right, and, and that, and that was not done for this application, correct?
That is correct.
And, um, as we get into steep slopes, you're understand, you've reviewed the steep slope ordinance, particularly as it relates to stormwater management, correct?
That is correct.
And, um, you would agree with its narrative that disturbance of steep slopes results in accelerated erosion processes from stormwater runoff?
That is correct. That is in the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, we're going into steep slopes again.
We're talking about stormwater management, Mr. Triolo. Stormwater, major site plan for stormwater. That's what you're asking for.
Yes, uh, you, you're right on the mark, Mr. Triolo, Mr. Simon. It's ten fifty four. Uh, we're going to have to carry this because definitely we want to have more testimony. Mr. Triolo wants to say something and we have to figure out when this is going to be good for everybody to come back.
I would have to consult with my client, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Mr. Simon, uh, and Mr. Keller, you'll let us know what works?
So.
Well, that's pretty open ended question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, so let me just like, let me just butt in here. Um, we have a special meeting already scheduled for, uh, next week, the nineteenth. I know that we're already anticipating another special meeting that's necessary for that application. Our next regular meeting is April second. So to try to squeeze something in between now and April second, um, I don't know whether the conference room or whether we have a Zoom administrator or if we have people available on Wednesday, the twenty sixth. I don't know if that works out. Uh, we haven't had the chance to speak with anybody. Uh, you could carry this to the second and figure out a special meeting date in April, if you wanted to try that also.
I'm not available on March twenty sixth. I'm already committed.
Okay.
April second is open.
Well, April second is the regular meeting. So we know we, we are going to be doing.
I'm just saying, I, I happen to be available that night. I'm happy to book off that night to be in West Orange.
Mr. Simon, does that work for you?
I, I have, already have three hearings scheduled on April second.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. I I will consult with my client, but, um, we have some major issues with carrying this application.
Okay, can I ask for some clarification? When you say consult with your client, are you consulting with your client now? Is that what you're saying?
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to shut off the audio and visual and then I'm video and then I want to call my client.
Go right ahead. Okay.
So we have where's the calendar? Unfortunately. So kind of March. Just.
Okay, while we're, while we're waiting, I will make the announcements. So the next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, April second, twenty twenty five at seven thirty PM. And the next special, and that will be via Zoom. And the next special planning board meeting will be March nineteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty PM in council chambers. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, the farthest out that we can bring our consent will be April second.
Uh, but Mr. Keller is not available and Mr. Simon, well, Mr. Keller is, but Mr. Simon is not.
We can back up to the nineteenth. Who's on your special meeting for the nineteenth?
West Essex Highlands cannot.
Can't do that.
They're already paid. They're all, that's a huge one.
Um.
Uh, wait, did Eric, you said you weren't, you weren't available on the twenty sixth?
Yeah, and I'm not available on the nineteenth either. Not that it's available anyhow, but no, I have a council meeting on the twenty sixth that I can't miss.
What, what about, um, I don't, I don't mean to get out of my lane, but March twenty seventh, Thursday?
Well, that's, that's when the zoning board meets and I, I, we have, um, duplicative employees that, that work those things.
Sorry.
I don't know whether that is a zoning board meeting or not, but I know Thursday nights typically.
If, do they have meetings every Thursday night or is that the fourth Thursday?
I, I don't know which one it is. I'm just saying. The zoning board is on the twentieth of, for March. So the twenty seventh is pedestrian safety, which is in a Zoom.
Ms. McGovern, if I'm not mistaken, I, I thought there was interest in doing a special meeting for West Essex Highlands on the twenty seventh. There were two days in a row and we didn't have availability for, for a quorum for that date. I might be misremembering that date, but I thought we already looked into that date.
You know, we, we did, and that is in my office and I'm not in my office right now in terms of the chart as to who was available for what date. But we ultimately just got a quorum for the twenty sixth. We didn't have a quorum for the twenty seventh.
Right.
We didn't have enough board members.
Presumably it's not available still.
The last time I checked, we didn't have a quorum for the twenty seventh.
But that wasn't by Zoom. That was in person.
That was in person, true.
Right. So. By show of hands, on the twenty seventh, could, is, is anybody available by Zoom?
What, the twenty seventh?
Twenty seven, Mr. Klein wants to kill me. Okay, good. Uh, we have one.
No, I didn't put the twenty six, I didn't put the twenty six in my calendar and I already picked another thing on the twenty six, so.
Okay.
Twenty seventh is pedestrian safety.
No, I'm, I'm busy the twenty seventh also.
Okay, so that's not going to work either. Okay.
Chris is raising his hand.
What happened that I missed?
Well, we're, we're working on it.
We don't have board members for the twenty seventh. There's another conflicting, um, meeting that. We don't have board members for the twenty-seventh. There's another conflicting, um, meeting that a lot of them or a few have.
It's hard when you move off a Wednesday.
About the twenty-fifth.
That's a Tuesday.
I'm out of, I'm out of town.
That's council.
And the.
That's town council.
Town council, so we'll lose.
Um. What, even though it's beyond Ms. Triolo's, um.
What about the ninth? April ninth. I know you said the second. What about the ninth?
April nine.
It's good.
If we give up on like, how about Monday, March twenty-fourth? Did anybody say that?
Monday, March twenty-fourth.
I'm not available that night. I am available on April, what'd you say, April ninth?
April.
I'm also available on April third.
April.
I can check with Joe if he can do April nine. I'm out of town.
Okay, April ninth. See if Joe can do. How many members of the planning board could do April ninth by Zoom?
It is the night after the council meeting, which might be hard for Joe.
Well, if Joe does it, does he do, he's doing the councils? So you have.
Does counsel.
Two, three, four, five. It looks like we have a quorum on April ninth, if that's, if it's possible.
We can send in a tomorrow and ask.
Got to know now.
You have to.
Oh, you got to know now.
You have to decide now.
I can text him. I know I'm out, but let me text him.
Okay.
Well, the only other alternative is he carries the second.
Mr. Keller, are you on the ninth?
I'm available on the ninth.
I am available on the ninth.
And Mr. Yolo?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll check with my client again and my experts who will be doing significant rebuttal.
Alright, that'll be a special meeting.
On real. People.
Yeah, Mr. Scott and Mr. Hazel available on the ninth too?
Yes. Mr. Scott, Mr. Hazel, are you available on the ninth?
Uh, yes, I am available.
I got one, yes.
I got two, yes.
I got a full house.
It, it could be that we find a third Zoom moderator for the ninth. If Joe can't do it.
Okay.
Think he can do it. It's just it's hard to do back to back.
Okay, I got it. So right now, if everybody's agreed, we're going to carry it to the ninth.
Yes.
Okay, so PB twenty-four.
Is there much more? The only thing, Chairman, I have is, is Mr. Simon Dunn. Because if we're going to go on the ninth and he has three hours of direct testimony, I'm going to have a real problem.
Ms. Triolo. I am doing my very best to be efficient and timely with my direct examination of Mr. Keller. At no time did I challenge or interrupt you when you provided direct testimony from your witnesses. We are doing our best.
I'm the applicant, your opposition.
Okay.
I just am asking the chairman if we can get a handle on completing Mr. Keller's direct testimony.
I, I will be, we'll be completing Mr. Keller's direct testimony and he's certainly at the next meeting.
But, okay, I appreciate that. So PB twenty-four dash nineteen, the Waymaker LLC, block one oh six, lock twenty dot oh three, zone R one forty Eagle Ridge Way will be carried to April ninth?
At Wednesday, April ninth.
And at, at seven thirty, and no, I, I, I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb here. Could we start at seven o'clock?
Yes.
Would that be acceptable to every, everybody on the planning board?
That's fine.
Yes, me.
Seven o'clock.
Yes.
And on, on April ninth via Zoom and no additional notice will be required.
Right.
M- Mr. Chairman, can I just respectfully ask?
Yes, sir.
That, that the board get confirmation on the record right now that Ms. Triolo's client has agreed to extend the time for the board to act through that meeting on April ninth.
The ninth, yeah. She was only going to go to the second.
Right, Ms. Triolo?
I'd have to consult with my client.
Go for it.
Alright, well, wait.
May I please have?
For the twenty-sixth special in, Diana, we're on for the twenty-sixth?
We have.
Special meeting for.
No, we have nothing on the twenty-sixth. West Essex Highlands is on the nineteenth, the twenty-sixth, um, I don't remember why we don't have it there. I think.
Oh, oh, alright. No, I don't have it in my calendar. I thought you said it was.
Yeah, no, no, no. They were, I couldn't, I was, I was looking at those dates back to back. We couldn't get a quorum, I don't think.
Ms. Triolo?
No, it was because the attorney was not available the last week of.
Oh, right, okay. Brian Plackers are not available that week, that's why.
Ms. Triolo?
Yes. I would like to know the time limits or time extent that we are going to be facing to complete Mr. Keller. I realize that you're stopping at eleven. His direct was not done. My client is very concerned about the protracted hearings. So can Mr. Simon tell us how long he's going to be to finish Mr. Keller's direct?
Without, 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 whoa, 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 wait a second. Hold it, hold it. Speak calm. The hour is late. Without interrupting Mr. Simon, can we have this done within an hour? Is there more than an hour's worth of testimony?
I, I, without promising, I do anticipate that finishing this direct will not take longer than an hour.
Okay. Where?
Without, without any promises, do the best I can.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
And the, and the other thing I'm just going to respectfully ask.
Sure.
That Ms. Triolo. I've been doing this for a long time. You've been doing this for a long time. This is the first time in thirty-something years that an adversary has not copied me on correspondence to the board on an application after I, you know, so.
I don't need, I don't need to have a lecture. I'll be speaking with my client.
Okay, so we do, we do need confirmation, though. Okay, she's.
I know.
That, um, she consents to this going forward to that.
Yeah.
In terms of time limits.
Okay, um, yeah.
And if she doesn't, y'all vote now? I don't know.
Is that, Diane, is that what, what happened?
Well, if you don't have sufficient information.
Otherwise, it's an automatic approval?
Um.
If we.
In case of a little bit, this is potentially a problem because they did file the notice of default and we, you know, we put them on it as soon as that got straightened out. And now we're, we're here and it was hoped that it would be finished by now, but we couldn't guarantee anything. So, um, she has to make, it, it goes to court, honestly, is what would happen, um, in that, in that, uh, situation.
And that takes longer than till April ninth.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Ms. Triolo.
You're muted for some.
You're, you're muted, Ms. Triolo.
I couldn't get it off. The, uh, the, my, my pad wasn't responding.
Thank you.
Okay. Based upon Mr. Simon's representation that he will not take more than an hour to complete his direct testimony so that we can complete on the ninth, I have consent to consider our agreement, Ms. McGovern amended to April ninth.
Right.
And Ms. McGovern can send me an email confirming that. But it's solely based on that representation, so we can get it done. I can tell you that my cross-examination will not be all that long and my rebuttal will address all of the points that Mr. Keller has raised with the same specificity.
Thank you.
Mr. Keller's exhibits that he referred to, he said that they would be given to.
Tomorrow morning. Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
Is that okay, Mr. Keller?
I already sent him to the township and copied my, uh, the attorney for the, for the Llewellyn Park. They already went.
May I ask? May I ask that if there are further? May I ask that if there are further exhibits intended for the next meeting? That he give those to Jamal at now as well, so that we can keep this close and truncated?
Absolutely. And Ms. Triolo, if there's any other letters to the board, please CC Mr. Simon. I'm asking you respectfully and I want to thank you very much.
No, no, no comment or response. It's unbelievable.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody. I appreciate everybody this evening and do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Uh, Mr. Klein, I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The eyes are above the nose. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Good night. Have a good night.
Night, all. Good night.